Towards the Terry Fox Foundation Fund from Niagara Falls. So, thank you very much for your efforts this evening. Do you want to make a comment at all, either of you?
I just want to say to thank Victor Angel because he was the one that came forward with the idea, which was a great idea, and also acknowledge Mikey Sanzol for doing a lot of fundraising. There's a lot of people that did a lot of donations to us. And Vic and I are big concerns with our kids when we get one, we're a little bit afraid of them.
Victor?
Yeah. Your worship, I just thought that it was a very fun event. It was for a good cause and made it a lot easier actually to be going through it with other people. So, I'm sure that cancer victims when they get in that situation, they need a lot of support as well. And having gone through a simple head shave, which is a lot easier going through with people. So, it's for a good cause, your worship, and I'm glad you did.
Thank you for your efforts. The first item on the agenda this evening is the adoption of the minutes of the council meeting of August 13th, 2007. Motion by councillor Maves, seconded by councillor Picario. Are there any comments or changes or deletions to those minutes? Having seen none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. This time, I'm going to ask for any disclosures of a pecuniary interest by any members of council. Councillor Picario?
Thank you, your worship, on AM 23-2007 zoning bylaw amendment application. Fallsview Boulevard is directly across from an existing business that I am part of.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, I have a conflict, AM 07-2000, Heinzstone Townhouse. I live in the area and also have been circulated, and so therefore declare conflict. Also, AM 23-207, 6505 Fallsview Boulevard. I do work through a company that I'm involved with for that organization. And check number 313347 has to do with election expenses, and I'll therefore declare conflict.
So noted. Thank you. Councillor Aiononi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Check 313429 made out to my spouse. And check 313027, that was our annual expenses.
Thank you. Councillor Wing?
Yes, report, FW 2007-97, and the associated bylaw dealing with the immersing of the drain because of the involvement of the bank.
Okay. Councillor Maves?
The conflict with check number 313099, that's my place in my corner.
Okay. And I'd like to disclose check numbers 313028, 313336, and 313337, either payable to myself or in trust with regard to final matter with regard to the election, I guess, surplus? Thank you. Councillor Diadati, do you wish to bring up another matter with regard to the minutes? Yes?
Yes, your worship. Please forgive me this snipify. In regard to new business, I just wanted to point out there's a slight inaccuracy. Under numbered companies, it should also be included named corporations in addition to numbered companies. I think that was omitted from the minutes.
Named corporations?
That's right. That was a suggestion by Mr. Beaman that we had that as well.
That's so noted. I don't think there's any objection by members of council. Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification. At this time, we do have a number of deputations. It's going to be a busy evening. I'd like to call on, first of all, from the Alzheimer's Society, Tina Kent, who is Director of Development, who is speaking regarding the National Coffee Break Day to be held on September 20th, the annual Alzheimer's Society fundraiser. Welcome, Tina.
Thank you very much, ourselves, the members of council, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Tina Kent, and I'm the Director of Development for the Alzheimer's Society Association. We have the society a right to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about our 12th Annual Coffee Break Program. This year's national day is September 20th. The idea of a coffee break is to make your coffee count. This concept was inspired by two of our very own councillors after going to a conference in Scotland where they were introduced to a tea break. As we all know, Canadians love their coffee, and that's where this national fundraiser was inspired. Our vision has evolved into a national fundraiser for Alzheimer's studies across Canada and raise millions of dollars. It is fun, social, and easy to organize. An Alzheimer coffee breaks is a time to think about your coworkers, your clients, your colleagues, your friends, and neighbors, to enjoy a cup of coffee or something else, a great time or specific get-together. Then you simply ask everyone to make a donation. The society supplies a kit, a host supplies the people. A kit contains the first pot of coffee courtesy of Sarah Lee from our national sponsor, the nation box of all promotional funds and literature you need. While many Alzheimer coffee breaks in Canada will be held on September 20th, you can certainly choose a date that is more convenient to you. It is not limited to a coffee break. Some of the most successful breaks have included James' little bit different. Many businesses use the opportunity for open houses, customer appreciation, barbecues, raffles, dress down days, and sell coffee cup decals. This year's honorary chair is C Y Marine Transport. Since the beginning 12 years ago, this company has supported and encourages employees to participate in a coffee break event. They have matched all the concerts at your annual barbecue and on the ships traveling to Great Lakes, dollar for dollar. Last year, their contribution was $25,000. This year's goal is $8,000 in Niagara region. Last year, thanks to your own coffee break here at City Hall and 300 others, we raised over $75,000 to support programs and services for individuals affected by Alzheimer's disease or related to that shift. Alzheimer disease is aggressive, degenerative brain disease causes the brain cells to shrink or disappear. The cells are replaced by death spots, plaques, and thread-like patches. These tangles eventually choke all the healthy brain cells. Since individuals with dementia experience declining in their cognitive and functional abilities, our agency provides ongoing support during their difficult journey. Society provides discussions with individual and family counseling, coping strategies, behavioral interventions, and information regarding successful resources. This is further accomplished through our lending library, the assistive device assistance program, support groups, workshops, and programs offered through our therapeutic living center and caregiver cafe. It is estimated that 1 in 13 Canadians over 65 have Alzheimer's disease or related dementia. Currently, there's over 7,000 in the Niagara region that has been diagnosed with a diagnostic disease. And with this region's aging population, this number is expected to triple. There is some good news. We know that a healthy heart through exercise and healthy diet full of omega-3 and omega-6 fatty acids can enhance your brain health. There's also been recent medical breakthroughs, including recent discoveries by the University of Toronto Research Team of a protein that appears to block the progression of Alzheimer's disease, giving us hope that it carries around the corner. Each year, our society must raise approximately 40 percent of a $1.6 million budget. We strive to deal with this challenge, and the coffee break is just one of the initiatives to compensate for the ever-changing economic structure of healthcare. A coffee break is simply organized, and the money stays right here to help rural owners. I encourage all of you to host your own coffee breaks. Big or small, everyone makes a difference. It always amazes me how collectively coffee money adds up when everyone gets involved. With your assistance, we can help today and provide hope for tomorrow. Anyone can register for a coffee break gift by simply calling the Alzheimer's Society at 905-687-3914. The following day, September 21st, is World Alzheimer Day. I also invite you to join us at Table Rock as the Canadian Horseshoe Falls will be illuminated blue and yellow and the American Falls purple. The colors will be visible between 9:00 to 9:15 p.m., 10:00 to 10:15 p.m., and 11:00 to 11:15 p.m., representing both countries' branded colors. I thank you very much for your fine consideration in this worthwhile matter. As ourselves, I have your coffee break case kits.
Thank you. Members of council, I'll be hosting again the coffee break here, actually at the service center this year as opposed to being the city hall. So, I'd be glad to accept that, and we'll proceed with that. So, thank you very much, Tina.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is a presentation. As I mentioned, Reverend Martin Good is here representing the Niagara Falls Ministerial Fellowship, and he's going to be speaking to us this evening about an effort that the Niagara Falls Ministerial Fellowship undertakes each year now. Our turn again this year, our turn to regenerate the heart of our city, and requesting a proclamation for the week of September 23rd to the 30th as a week of prayer for the state of Niagara Falls. Welcome, Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Beaman, members of city council, city hall staff, fellow residents in Niagara Falls, for the privilege of addressing you this evening concerning our turn 2007. Last fall, by invitation of Mayor Fitzsimmons, the Ministerial Fellowship coordinated a week of prayer, specifically calling us to humble ourselves before God, to turn to God for His favor on our lives and our city and the healing of our land. This year, we're focusing our times of prayer along the theme of regenerating the heart of our city. It's our belief that God loves our city as He loves all people and longs to show His love and passion and healing in the midst of the complex and challenging situations that face us in the coming year. While we meet monthly for prayer right here in these chambers, we have felt increasingly that by God intercede together from the heart of our city for the hearts of those involved in every sector of life in our city. We also believe that prayer is not an option. Maybe for when we are particularly desperate or when crises hit us, we pray ahead for God's favor and that He would turn our hearts and our homes and our city toward Him. We're requesting that you declare September 23-30 a week of prayer for Niagara Falls. In so doing, we therefore extend a warm invitation to people all over the city, including yourselves and city leaders, to seek the Lord together for His favor and blessing here from the heart of our city during this week. Details of the theme, schedules of prayer gatherings, and specific requests relating to the sectors of our city are posted on our website at ourturn.ca. Again, I thank you for this privilege for making this presentation.
Are there any questions of Pastor Good? Pastor, I'd like to say thank you, yes, councillor, okay. I'd like to say thank you on behalf of members of council. I'd like to extend our appreciation to the Niagara Falls Ministerial Fellowship for the time they take to come here each month and certainly to organize this week. I know that yourself and others, as David Chubb, who's here with us in the gallery, and all the other members of the Ministerial Fellowship have a very strong concern for our city, and we do appreciate that. So, thank you very much. A motion to approve the request, councillor Diadati, councillor Peter Angelo. Any discussion to that? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much, pastor. The next order on the agenda is a deputation by Regional Councillor Norm Puttig. We'd like to address council on a matter of governance and net core. Also this evening in the gallery, I should note, we do have Regional Councillor Brian Height. If you'd like to stand, Brian, welcome to our council. Thank you, Brian. Councillor Puttig?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I want to thank the clerk for putting me on as a professor. Just the mayor, members of council, we are aware before the end of our Sheriff's Office in 2010, we will celebrate the 40th anniversary of the meeting of Niagara. We are also aware in 2006, the premier committee extends our elected Sheriff's Office to four years primarily in more time to plan the future direction of our municipalities. I believe this is not happening in the key areas of governance and structure in municipalities to eliminate the duplication of services, especially in administration. The region of Niagara in 1998 debated and sought a ordinance for the consultant called Berkeley Report that would have forced foreign three cities for greater tax dollar saving, especially in the British Empire. Result, I am advised, was a debate by Regional Councillor Ince that was bitter and ugly. Chair Gardington told me earlier in the year, because of global frustration, Ince was terminated. A big reason for failure to restructure the region in 1998, I learned, was the smaller cities had the votes to defeat any advances that stalled savings to the taxpayer. We are in a different world. I live in a cross-border issue, loss of industry, jobs in Niagara, and obvious duplication of services and administration, in my view, must cease. I ran for office on this pledge. To be brief, last day, I made a report to Regional Council going through the process and it still is. Outlining a way, in my view, begins talks again. It was sent to a business planning session that in effect buried the proposal for no real action. Chair Gardington, paraphrased, does not want to go there. And I'm talking about the district attorney because of the restructuring. I've been told by one mayor from a small municipality that smaller municipality vote would stop any restructuring even if I was correct. Well, that is a challenge I accept and brings me to my point why I'm here this evening. It is obvious I will not receive approval from 12 regional governors to review structure and governance. So, why beat my head against the wall? Why not start with one? I had a discussion with the mayor of St. Catherine, Brian McMullough, and asked if he would obtain approval to have Niagara Falls and St. Catherine have meaningful discussions to improve the governance and structure of our two cities, especially in the administration to save money. Without hesitation, he said absolutely. There are many reasons to do this, and I'll list the following few. Number one, the regional Niagara population will double in 50 or 20 years. Are we ready? Two, with the new green belts in Catherine, it's in a slow-broke position. Three, possible loss of two police stations in our two largest cities. Four, cross-border issues, the US dollar at a low par is hurting businesses. Five, loss of 300,000 jobs in industry and materials in Niagara region, it is in a slow-broke or standing at nail-broke. Six, it's the right thing to do. When the two largest cities begin talks, the others, in my view, will follow our loose credibility. That's one way to say it. In civil affairs, ministers carelessly, on January of '07, advised me by email that authority is given in Municipal Act, Section 188 to 193, to begin such talks on local levels. And of course, it could be done on a regional level. He also offered a staff for assistance. I told him I would be here tonight when I saw him in Ottawa at AML Conference Station. He said, "Thanks." Also, I've had discussions with a former cabinet minister, two present regional chairs, both outside of Niagara, who have had experience with this type of discussion. And if asked, as it's posed by Dr. McNeely, if asked for assistance in preliminary talks to avoid any mistakes they may initially from their community, this is not for all of us. Finally, my friend Hazel McCallion, and I assure everybody here is her friend, mayor of Business Act, who runs a $660 million circus, will always tell you, she's told me for 35 years, and I know that, there is no way to run government except by the business. I ask you, members of council, to begin talks with St. Catherine's with an open mind, open process, receive the savings suggested in the 1998 Berkeley Report. And Mr. Mayor, if you want to take that separately, I'll only be tuning in on the other one. I may have my mind in regards to net core, which I'll tell you when I decide.
Are there any questions of councillor Puttig? Councillor Thompson?
Norm, I just find it a term exactly what I'm looking for here. And we've discussed this previously, and I think if you're reluctant to examine what has happened in the past, then I think your future is in jeopardy. And we've been 40 years for the regional government, and if you ask, probably 80% of the people in the region, not only in the city of Niagara Falls, they are not happy about the duplication, the additional taxes, the overlapping that exists and has existed in many areas. There has been some movement afoot to try to rectify some of that. But I just want, are you just talking about working with St. Catherine's? Are you interested in looking at the whole governance issue again, which I was in favor of? In fact, there's a resolution from this council asking that the maximum number of people at the regional level should be no more than 15 as representatives rather than the 31 and 32 that are there now. In my opinion, I think that this is, and I congratulate you on your initiative since you've been up there in the last eight, 10 months, eight months, with highlighting the issues with respect to spending and between local municipalities and the region. And I think it's a great time, just off the Berkeley Report. And so, are you just suggesting St. Catherine's and Niagara Falls? Are you looking at the whole issue of governments? In my opinion, if we had three municipalities instead of 12, that was always my preference and would certainly endorse a resolution to sit down and start talking about that again.
First of all, yes, St. Catherine's and Niagara Falls talk tonight, and I get a little talk here with the others. But I don't want to prolong this, Mr. Mayor, because in my view, it's so simple that you take the first step with somebody who is willing to sit down and talk. He's a great guy. And if you come back with one...
Is he talking about Mr. McNeely?
Oh, he is with me. What I'm saying is, if you, it's up to you. If you get the talks going and you find out that it's very truthful, then I think it's going to have spinoff. And as I said in my first paragraph, you're not going to get the 12 municipalities to agree to look at government. On the behalf of the three large ones which have a total of 120,000 population to start talking, I think that this would involve... No, let me just say this, and I don't, I'm not going to say any names. But I've been told by a former minister, cabinet minister, that one of the things that they've been waiting for for years and they've found is the region, the region to make a step to amalgamate some cities. I've also been told and verified through a street CFT left of Asia, that's why they don't pack the goat train. We have the interactive. They don't have who to talk to. If you come to St. Catherine's, Niagara Falls is going to complain and sue on its own. So, I did come here to begin the discussion. All I want is for you people, any way you wish, to call up the mayor of St. Catherine to start saving the tax bill, simple as that.
Members of council, I just wanted to say, it isn't quite that way, but I did have a chance to speak to Minister Garretson. He visited my office a number of months ago, and we did have a chance to talk. The minister's made his position as the minister responsible for municipal affairs that any amalgamation wouldn't take place unless it was a request from the ground up from our council and others forward. We did have discussions, so we haven't had go transit here, and we're making headway. Councillor Wing sits on the Transportation Steering Committee with us at the region, and we've had good dialogue with them. They aren't complaining about any lack of leadership by any means. It's a matter of other issues that are dealing with them, so I'm not sure, councillor, if you're fully aware of that. But again...
I'm aware of that.
Okay. But again, I wouldn't blame the lack of the go train on the lack of a unified Niagara.
That's why they stopped the cattle.
Well, councillor Thompson, yes?
Well, I think we could be here all evening discussing this issue, and a little different than I thought you were going to present, but getting the CAOs together or the mayors to have a discussion about cost savings is certainly not a negative motion, and I would have no problem. But hopefully, it'll lead to some discussion and dialogue with respect to amalgamation and try to make the region and the municipalities work better together and cost savings.
Yeah, councillor, that already actually happens, as you know. But councillor Aiononi?
We're a little confused. Are we talking about if you're talking to Niagara Falls and St. Catherine, amalgamating Niagara Falls and Connecticut? I'm confused.
Yes, you might ask that question to councillor Puttig.
All I've talked about is what Section 188 to 193 in Municipal Act gives you authority to work with other municipalities, other administrations. I talked to one of the larger, over-million population, three million old chair who has been in that position for 10 years, and I had a very good chat with him at AML, and he said, "Don't talk amalgamation of cities. Talk reduction of administration costs." He said, "I can assure you that's what it is." For instance, Ottawa amalgamated 11 cities. It took a while to get started.
We do that.
What do you understand what it is? I can't say that any sudden you have a mayor who is very willing to talk to you. For instance, our friend, Mr. Darverson, I understand, retiring, I know perfectly well, I'm a liberal. But I'm just suggesting this, that you may want to talk to St. Catherine's who are locked in by the green belt. They can't expand. They can't build over anymore unless they take over for it. You might ask them how they're doing with their planners and try and work out instead of replacing Mr. Darverson to get something going. And I want to tell you again, I'm not here to give you my ideas. I've been doing this for seven, eight years. All I'm saying is that you just go and sit with the mayor of St. Catherine's, dress up to your own rules, and you go and talk and see what will happen. The CAOs meet once a month or every five weeks now. What is it, Fall of 15, Mr. McDonald?
Just on that, actually, not just the CAOs, the CAOs do meet, but also the planners meet on a regional basis, the finance directors meet, the public works people meet. In fact, there is a lot of interaction and communication on a regular basis with all of the municipalities, including the region.
Thank you.
What I'm saying is, instead of 12 vineyards meeting, if you have three cities, you know you have three that's your administration. However, that's what I have here for you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Maves?
Yes, councillor Puttig, you mentioned go train. You're possibly reading go train here. We already have Coach Canada, Trent Weiwei, Darren Gray, Coach, who do an awful lot of business here. I'm sure they spend in excess of $1 million in Niagara Transit. Would you want to replace them with go train? Is that what you want to do? What's your plan with that?
Well, no. If I came here to talk about that, I would check it out first before I make statements that are quite unexpected. I was appointed by the transit, six months. I have a study that I'm bringing to the city hall. It's a lot harder than it seems.
So, you're suggesting you can study that on this level?
No, no I'm not. I have an open mind, and if you want to, Mayor McMullough, you're an open, no secret. I'd hate to help you say that.
Okay. Yes, let's have that discussion another time. But your pleasure, members of council. You've heard councillor Puttig make his comments.
We're in here for ten minutes.
Yes, do you want to deal with this matter? Do you want to receive information?
Your worship, I mean, the CAOs are already meeting.
Here, that's right. So, motion received for this information? Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Wing. Motion to receive the councillor's information, that's fine. Anything, any other comments regarding it? Pardon? Pass on to the CAO. Yes, we have discussions already, so as you know that, as you heard our CAO mentioned earlier. So, you can just, we can deal with this separately. So, as councillor's requested, we've received this information from councillor Puttig and receiving it filing. Okay? Any other comments?
Yeah, if I could ask one question?
Yeah, we have the vote.
I'm saying that they're already talking. I don't think we've had any reports back here where they're talking about reducing staffing and communication. Have you had a report there?
Well, maybe not to that regard, Mr. McDonald.
The, I don't think we have a mandate to coordinate staff numbers with other communities. But this council certainly has had reports back which shows opportunities to reduce staffing in various areas, and this council deals with that, of course, on a regular basis. We had discussions as recent as tonight in terms of opportunities to reduce our staffing costs long-term. So, it's an ongoing situation, and the fact is, we meet frequently with all of our departments with the region looking for opportunities to reduce costs. We currently do purchasing together with the region when opportunities exist. We certainly do public works projects together, and then those issues are often here at council. So, if the suggestion is that we continue with dialogue with the other communities in the region to look for opportunities for efficiencies, we're certainly, we're more than happy to continue on that direction.
Well, here again, you see, I said overall motion on this, you talked about it ahead of time. But what I'm talking about is that the CAOs of the Fall of 13, including the region, come back to your councils and suggest ways to take the smaller municipalities that work over in the way they're hooking together and so on and so forth. that work over in the way they're hooking together and so on and so forth, and end up with one or three cities and eliminate all of your meetings.
We would, your worship, be happy to eliminate or reduce meetings, certainly. Back in eighty-nine, when the Berkeley report was taking place, myself and other staff were involved, and my recollection is that, in fact, that was driven politically. It was not a staffing issue. It was very political. In fact, at the time, the province basically were encouraging municipalities to do that, and that's how Toronto, Ottawa, Hamilton, and other areas amalgamated. One of the reasons the Berkeley report stopped and didn't go any further is because the province withdrew that request for those communities to amalgamate. And without political support, these amalgamations simply do not take place. The others that took place in the majority of cases are because the province encouraged them to do so, except in the areas where they're very small municipalities. The interaction in Niagara with the Berkeley report, without a political interest in reducing the number of communities, just isn't going to happen in a structural basis. So, so I think Mr. Puttich is talking about a political move, not an operational issue. And if there's no political will to do it, we certainly would not be reducing meetings. We have a lot more meetings. And like I said, on the operational side, there is a lot going on right now. That will continue. On the political side, that's council's call as to whether or not they want to talk about amalgamation.
Members of council, we have a motion on the floor. I'd like to call the vote. The motion is to receive Counselor Puttich's information. Yes, Counselor, carry on.
Well, your worship, I'd just like to say that I would not like to just slough off what Alderman Puttich said. I think that he said some of the things that we all think. So I think that I'd like some time to think about what he's presenting, have some dialogue with our staff, have some dialogue with some other people. I too would just like to get some better, because we all think there's duplication in region and municipalities, and I'd like to revisit it again at a later date.
You can do so, as I said, we're receiving counselor's information this evening, so...
I just don't want to give you the impression that we're just, and I'm just preparing stuff on, right? I mean, he's made some good points and put a chest of talk about it.
Thank you. Counselor Peter Angel?
I'm somewhat lost at this point. I mean, duplication at the region is different than talking about amalgamating cities. I mean, there are different levels of government, so exactly what are we talking about? Talking about amalgamating cities, I'm not in favor of that at all. Talking about duplication services at the region, I think everyone's in favor of that.
Sure. And we're having ongoing meetings, counselors, as you know. You heard the CAO. We have dialogue continuing. We're trying to rationalize staff at the regional level. We've streamlined our planning process, as you know. There's been changes. I know that our Director of Planning will tell us about that as well, so that process has been streamlined, so we're looking at efficiencies. Counselor Height is here from the region. I'm not sure if he wishes to make any comment, but Counselor, do you wish to make any comments with respect to that, those items you mentioned?
I think I was, I'm here because I also support what you're trying to do. I was on council fifteen, eighteen years ago, when we felt that cities in Catharines, that fewer municipalities were needed in Niagara. It had been a roadblock, and when the city of Niagara Falls and St. Catharines work closely together, it does make a lot of sense. I'm at the region now, and as I said at a meeting, I think the marijuana need is big because I would make the statement that there are only four or five of us at the region that truly are in favor of one or two or three municipalities. Majority of the region would like status quo, but also concerned with your tax dollars, therefore, we're looking at efficiencies and trying to cut the cost and duplication, like we discovered with planning, and we're looking at public works and so forth. We're working towards that, but I'm supportive of one community, so that's our foundation now.
Yes. So, Counselor, we have a motion before us that we have, we receive counselor's information. If you wish to visit this in the future, we can certainly bring it up by any member of council. We could go there. So Counselor Puttich, if you just allow me, I'll call the vote. That's for the motions on the floor. All those in favor?
This is firstly, of course.
Receive, yeah? Any opposed? Okay, the motion's carried. Thank you very much. And Counselor, if you'd just make it brief, we've got many people behind you yet, so...
I know, and you know, I'm known to one of the region, that says I hope in a preamble and like you talked about, I'm on the line. I don't, I don't trust the time. Members of council, this is only going to take me two minutes, because I'm only going to tell you it's up to you, if you want to continue supporting a $2.7 million budget that is given to the Netco operation at the region. And you recall the motion that this council approves every week to have a memorandum of understanding that will be drafted by those cities with economic development offices, by the mayors and CEOs, brought to this council before signing and sent on to the region for discussion. Now, I assume, you just heard that everything is so open and you're working all hard together. I assume you have been told this is no longer, this will no longer transpire, as no agreement can be reached. Rather, I'm told, regional staff will report to regional council, and this is the thing that really bothers me. In February of this year, and Counselor Height was sitting on my left, I'm in Corporate Services, when I was attending my first meeting, where a presentation was made, a budget for Netco. Within ten minutes, I was in a real dust-up. I'd never seen anything of a light, and I liked it, and I just couldn't stand it anymore, and I spoke up and said, "Are you actually telling me that you run a $2.7 million operation?" And the fellow ended up walking up. Anyway, the reason I'm here is to give you a few pointers. Your Gateway and Grizzly last year lost $58,000. Took me seven months to find out. Netco has $95,000 under budget for lobbying in Queens Park for the Niagara week, which is two days. I did turn over the phone and I have an hour for it. I told them. As I said, the Gateway lost $58,000 last year. I can't get information from them. They made statements, and I'm told because they're a corporation, I can't get any information. Now, I just want to leave this with you, because I have a funny feeling that I've been told I could do legally to maybe get this thing going a little bit more, in regards to the destruction. Last Thursday, last Thursday, I'm going to leave this with you. Keep in mind that you're not going to have a memorandum without changing, but that came from one of the mayors I would have to meet. The bottom line with me is, last Thursday, I asked a senior official if I could get some information from Netco. I was told that this person couldn't get it, and they're on the board. I have to send an email and wait for the next meeting, and we typed in, "Yeah," and we just picked. So I went to somebody else, and they said, "Why don't you send them some information?" $2.7 million? I've asked, other people have asked, "What do you do? What have you brought here?" And the only answer I can get from the other EDA offices is the fact that, for instance, you just got your $35 million. You'll see that in your brochure, take out the $35 million, they take the credit all the time, they just start spending. Now, I, as Counselor Carrio said, I'm bringing things to your attention, and it's the last time I'm going to do it, because I've got another three and a half years over there, and I'm not going to sit by and not be told I can't get information. It's unbelievable. And by the way, let me end on this, what really bothers me about all the waste that you're up going on. And I'm not talking about the local, regional nursing home. Both throughout Ontario, I constantly get calls from different people, as you know, in regional council. When I was here, I chaired a committee with Alderman Wing and Secretary of Dursen, that were intolerable for people, seniors, politicians. And it goes on today, a dollar thirty a day for diapers. And I go to responsible people and say, "How can you allow this to go on, this waste of money, and there's nothing left to do to bring any business in this community?" Keep in mind that they tell me. I've emailed, I've asked plenty, I've gone to the senior people, and they even tell me they don't know what to do. Now, I used to have a fight, and here is the letter or the newspaper clipping, and I'll end this, and it's right here. Port Colborne, Counselor Bob Saraceno questioned Wensky that the NDC is even need, he's eighteen years, twenty-eight years at the region, good friend of everybody here. They're building an empire, he said, and nobody, NDC is rarely seen in this city, that's his city, except on the spotlight is on a highly public event. You see that when there's a big announcement, a bank open. So I'll leave it with you. I'm having a lot of fun. I got elected. I just turned seventy-seven, a week and a half ago on. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your patience. See you next year.
Thank you, Counselor. Members of council, just for your benefit, as early as tomorrow morning, there's another meeting with the EDOs, the CAOs, and the mayors at eleven o'clock. Council has given us a direction that they'd like to see an MOU before it's executed, and I can tell you, there have been several meetings, a number of meetings attended by our CAO, our treasurer as well, myself, our business development officer, Serge Filicetti, and we've been meeting on a regular basis, and tomorrow is a subsequent meeting. You may be aware that the regional CAO, Mr. Mike Trojan, was tasked to report back to the regional council with respect to the activities at Netco and some things that we had a concern about at the regional level. So both the region and the municipalities are involved. We have five municipalities who have economic development offices at this point, and they have been meeting, and they'll come to us with some recommendation, and we'll come back to this council if and when action is required. So Counselor Inoney, you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, how much money from the state of Niagara Falls goes to Netco?
Mr. Burton, would you be able to advise us on that, please?
Your worship, we don't have an exact amount, but we would calculate that approximately twenty-three percent.
Is there a margin?
Our portion of regional expense is about twenty-three percent.
We give, I can't remember how much right now, to Niagara Falls tourism, to market Niagara Falls. We have our own offices that do an excellent job. I don't know, I mean, I sat on the former convention center committee with Ben Mayor Thompson and Alderman Volpatti, and I never ever saw them there. So I'm just curious, if we're going to get a, they're really proud of Wasi brochure, writing on bringing the convention center to Niagara Falls or being part of it. Did they really participate? Because I've seen some of their stuff where they take credit for the things that you or former mayor, the council, or our offices have done. Why would we continue in that vein if we've got Niagara Falls tourism and we write about our EDA and Serge Filicetti on a regular basis? Why are we even spending any of our tax dollars in there?
Well, you know, as I said, I think it's unfair to judge it by one person's perspective. We have our economic development officer, Serge Filicetti, who I'm sure will be prepared to submit a report, and also our CAO. And our CAO was away just more recently, we had the last meeting, but there is, I said, a meeting tomorrow, and I think we'll be able to come back to you with a full report on what the recommendation is. But if it's our involvement, again, with respect to Netco, we can talk about this as well. We can put it on the agenda and get a full report. Yes?
Okay. And I'll stand, Counselor Puttich's made a thought here. If he can't get the information in regards to the $2.7 million or books or budget or spending that he's asking for, as a municipality that puts in that percentage of their budget, should we not be able to ask for it again? Because one would think, if we're using tax dollars, we should be able to see where those dollars go.
I think that's fair. Mr. McDonald, do you want to make any comment with respect to that? We have access to those figures.
I mean, we haven't submitted anything that I'm aware of from the city, where we have not been provided with data, and I guess it would depend on why we want information. We do get a financial statement.
Sure.
We do get copies of the budget, but, you know, Mr. Puttich is correct. I mean, we've had some significant issues over the last couple of years relative to what we perceive as a lack of communication, a lack of opportunity for input, and so on. And while there will not be a memorandum of agreement, there will be a report that's I just received today, it's a draft from Mike Trojan, that will go to regional council. And there is agreement between the municipalities and the region relative to some potential changes to really provide better communication, provide opportunity for input. And our concern is that if the money is being spent and we're putting in twenty-three percent, we should have some input as to where it goes. And so we've been looking at more at that level. We haven't been looking necessarily at efficiency of Netco in those discussions. It's more to make sure we have appropriate communication and appropriate input, and the report, what is I said, which I just received like today, is being drafted, and I'm sure we'll be sharing that with council very soon, so...
Counselor Inoney and Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to thank Counselor Puttich. I mean, we're forever saying, you know, our regional councils are welcome here, and I think it's his responsibility to bring concerns like that here when we have it. Concerns may be more to hear you say that over the past few years, there's been significant issues and a very lack of communication and so on and so forth. We haven't heard that from our staff, and I'm not faulting you, I'm just saying, I'm glad to see you come here. You can read the newspaper all the time. As counselors with very little information on Netco, we just read it and, you know, it's like a receiving file on your head. You read it, you keep track of it. But I'd like to make a motion that this council request from Netco their financial statements and budget, so that we know where our twenty-three percent is being spent. Maybe we're not happy with the way that they're doing it.
A motion by Counselor Inoney, seconded by Counselor Wing. Any discussion? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, well, you know, I don't know whether everybody's living in a vacuum or not, but this has been an issue for years, where, you know, you're trying to get a memorandum of understanding, which there was even confusion about at this council. Somebody told me it wasn't coming back to this council. Somebody told me it was coming back to the council, and we couldn't even get a straight answer on that, even at the local level. But, you know, all you got to, there's Counselor Saraceno in Port Colborne, that talk to people in Fort Erie. They're all saying the same thing. We never see these people. What are they doing? What have they brought to their municipality? What kind, what are we getting out of $2.7 million? The region. Come on, that's, we got to have, and it's too bad Mr. Filicetti isn't here tonight, because I was going to ask him directly, what kind of cooperation do you get from Netco? And what have they brought here? He's told me personally on many occasions, we'd never heard of them. Just in the last year, there's been a lot of fuss and a lot of questions, probably through Counselor Puttich, and then everybody's trying to join hands and cover their ass. And I tell you, there's a lot of problems here, and the taxpayer is the one that's paying the bill. Let's get Mr. Filicetti to come here in a committee meeting and tell us exactly what's going on. Tell us what kind of cooperation he gets at Netco. $2.7 million. We're paying our part of the freight there. Let's find out what's going on. And I tell you, it isn't good. You tell me one thing that Netco has brought to the city of Niagara Falls, and what kind of dialogue that Mr. Filicetti has had with them over the past five years. All of a sudden, Mr. Counselor Puttich was making some noise at the region about it, and they came down and went through a couple of industry here, which we haven't got too much left, and they didn't even tell Mr. Filicetti that they were coming. So all of a sudden, there was a big dust-up about, you know, why are they coming in here now? Well, they're coming in because somebody's asking questions. I tell you, before we do anything with respect to our budget, and maybe we don't have the legal right, but we have to send a message to these people that we're not going to pay into, we're going to put our own money into our own economic development department and make sure that we get the benefit from it directly. And this isn't my comments, this is coming right from our own people, who say that they get very little and very little dialogue in the past. So let's all get together and support what Counselor Puttich is bringing to our attention, not because he's got better things to do, because he's concerned about it and he's conscientious about bringing this to our attention. So I tell you, before we get into budget discussions, we better have some answers, because I'm not going to waste any more money spending on it at the region.
I want to clarify one thing that you said. You mentioned Mr. McDonald, that the CEOs and the mayors are needing a couple of memorandums of understanding. I could ask you, Mr. McDonald, if you'd had three or four memorandums of understanding, I told by a couple of other mayors, the first one, which was very strong, for Netco to implement a policy in order, was rejected by them. Went back and did the second one, understand, and you know, approach you there, how many you did. Now, the reason that Mr. Trojan is coming back and reporting, because he couldn't get them to sign what we wanted as a political force. They are playing...
No, that isn't, that isn't quite correct, Counselor. Last Tuesday, there was a meeting held in Niagara Falls at the community center, and the EDOs and the mayors who represented the five cities that have EDOs decided that maybe they may not ask for an MOU. And after that meeting, they were going to meet in consultation with Mr. Trojan, and tomorrow he'll be reporting back as to the outcome of that meeting. So at the request of the five agencies in the five cities, there may be no request for an MOU, but that will be something that they'll determine tomorrow. So that's the latest information that we have as of last Tuesday.
That's me and your chair.
No, I didn't share it.
You're not... Did you not chair a meeting in Fort Erie?
No, I attended a meeting. But the meeting last, actually, last week, the CAO from Fort Erie was asked, he was tasked to go back to meet with the regional CAO. And he was doing that, Mr. Slang was doing that. Okay? So we have a motion on the floor. Yes, Counselor DiDati?
Thank you, Worship. I just have a question. I just hope we can get this answered. I don't know if anyone in the room knows. Why is Netco set up as an independent corporation? Does anybody know? I mean, versus being a department of the region? I can see police services. I see the logic. Transit didn't make sense to us. We brought it in under the umbrella of the city. It seems Netco is accountable to a board of directors rather than the government or the taxpayer. And I just wonder why there's this buffer between them and the elected officials? Does anybody know the reason?
John? Mr. McDonald?
Worship, I'm not familiar with the history of the corporation.
I asked that question to a couple of your officials and told that, I tell you, they were very serious. You said, oh, he's the nice guy. The board's the nice guy. I asked about the chair. Nice guy. I said, what are your appropriations for? They don't.
Members of council, we have a motion before us. Let's deal with that. And yes, there is. Can you read the motion, please, Mr. Clerk?
To request a copy of the Netco budget on how the $2.7 million is spent.
Okay. Counselor Thompson?
Well, I'd like to add to that, that we have a report from Mr. Filicetti with respect to his relationship and his personal involvement with Netco and the benefits and the advantages and disadvantages of our association. So we can all have a discussion before budget time.
You can deal with that as a separate motion if you wish. Counselor Inoney?
Thank you. I'd like to also ask for a motion. Counselor DiDati brought up a great point. I'd like the question answered. Why are they an independent body and not answerable to the taxpayers? You know, the more you hear, the more it's just, there's something sounds off here. Maybe suggestion, Niagara Falls tourism was retooled and revamped by an internal audit when you had, I can't remember, Marshall, I can't think of his last name at this point, come in and walk right through it. And he found concerns that has changed the whole scope of Niagara Falls tourism. You know, public donors is funding this group. Maybe they need the same internal audit, have somebody go in. But it always rankles me when you have an elected official ask a question and had it happened, has been told, go through freedom of information. That's a huge red flag that says, we just don't wanna tell you.
Okay. Pleasure of council here. Let's get moving on this. We've gotta go. You wanna blend? Okay? You wanna have two separate motions on this?
No.
Before I break them?
One motion.
Okay, from the amendment? That's fine.
One motion, yes.
Okay, one motion. So, Mr. Clerk, you got that clear?
That's mine.
Want to read it again, please?
I've got it clear.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? The motion's carried. Thank you very much. Let's move on. Thank you very much again. And again, I'm gonna ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda.
The public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to permit townhouses, on-street townhouse dwellings at various addresses on Pinestone Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 17, 2007. And by posting a sign on the property in question, anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'm gonna ask the director of planning, Mr. Darbison, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darbison?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, our first of several applications this evening is a matter that was deferred by council several months ago. It's regarding on-street townhouse proposals by Walker Development Community. The subject lands are shown here. It's off the Pine Rose, Pinestone Road Avenue, or Road, actually. And they comprise of 19 townhouse units. The applicant is proposing to build 19 on-street townhouse dwellings on approximately 2.6 acres of land. The subject lands are currently zoned for single-family purposes, and a multiple-family residential zone is being proposed. The application came before council on June 11, 2007, and was deferred by this council for the following general reasons. There's concerns about impacts on views. There was concerns about embankment erosion, insufficient parking for townhouse dwellings, no removal and maintenance of rear yards of internal townhouse units. This is the more detailed site plan proposal. These are 12 single-family lots currently, and this is how the lands are intended to be subdivided into blocks of on-street townhouses. Going through those matters in detail, impacts on views. Residents immediately south of the proposed townhouses voiced concerns about their panoramic views of Lake Ontario being affected by the proposed blocks of townhouses. The applicant has reduced the height of the townhouse blocks immediately behind the two concerned residents. And the reduction is, has involved a reduction in height from 32 feet to down to 28 feet. The applicant has clarified that units 9 to 15 will be bungalow townhouse units, have to be single-story bungalows, and they will be at a height of 21 feet. And overall, it's recommended that these provisions be included in the mending bylaw with some flexibility, allowing a maximum 30 feet and 22.9 feet respectively for the townhouses and the bungalows down units. The next matter was slope stabilization. Substantial slope up to the neighboring properties in Calagero State exists to the rear of the proposed townhouses on the south side of Pinestone Road. There is a concern that construction on the site may erode this slope affecting the property above. Development of these townhouse units will be subject to a development agreement, which will secure a grading plan that will ensure that the slope is properly stabilized to avoid erosion. The next matter was with respect to parking issues. Residents are concerned that there is not sufficient parking for existing neighborhood dwelling units. Additional townhouses may exacerbate the situation. While one space for dwelling unit is the standard requirement for an on-street townhouse unit, the proposed townhouse units, the proposed, with this application, will be built with double-car garages and double driveways. Therefore, there will be ample parking opportunity for the new units, and they won't further impact on the existing neighborhood. With respect to snow clearance, residents are concerned that the snow, that snow clearance during the winter reduces the maneuvering width of streets, and the units may exacerbate this situation. The proposed townhouses will have landscaped front yards adjacent to the driveways that will provide areas for snow storage. And finally, maintenance easements. Existing on-street townhouse dwellings have no legal access to the rear yards from public streets without crossing the neighbor's property. Legal access could be provided by means of a maintenance agreement. Without these easements, access would need to be provided through arrangements between neighbors. Council has previously dealt with this same concern by inserting a warning clause in the conditions of draft approval for the subdivision, noting that there is no legal access to the rear yards of internal townhouse units. If the residents are, maintain their concerns about this issue, individual consent applications could be processed, providing these access points. It's our conclusion that the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is in compliance with the official plan. Reducing the height of the proposed townhouses down to 30 feet will lessen any impact on the panoramic views of residents. Proposed townhouses will not impact on neighborhood street clearance and on-street parking. Request for maintenance easements for existing on-street townhouses in the neighborhood will have to be dealt with on a site-by-site basis through consent applications. It's our recommendation this evening that council through the revised zoning bylaw amendment application to permit the construction of 19 townhouse dwelling units instead of 12 single units, subject to standards outlined in this report, and specifically the two upper limits of 30 and 22.9, respectively. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Mace?
I just noticed that the ministry originally presented a conflict, sort of conflict, in my, roughly my neighborhood, most of our conflict.
Okay, so noted. Thank you very much. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this amendment? Yes, please come forward. If you're being kind enough, sir, that just to adhere to our 10-minute limit, and we'd like to have you give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. Your worship, members of council, my name is Craig Fowler and a resident at 6313 Pinestone Road.
Thank you, sir.
In June 2007, I will respect your 10-minute limit, by the way. Residents of the district know the neighborhoods of St. Davids filed an objection to the application for rezoning by law, 79200, covering 12 single-family lots, now to accommodate 19 townhouse units. The council deferred that to tonight. As recently as prior to last week, the residents received a new design proposal indicating revision to the original plans, designed to reduce the original proposed overall height of the 19 townhouses covered by this rezoning application. Prior to offering comments to council and to the developer on feeling of residence in redesign, the residents would like to take this opportunity to make the following observations and comments for consideration of council. Three primary points. It was stated by the residents at the last meeting, snow removal is a major issue in this district. In contrast to Mr. Darbison's notations, it's a feeling of the residents that this can be magnified if the rezoning is approved, as there will, first of all, be an additional 19, the residents, nine of which will be middle units, and will not have access to landscaped area to place snow. It is the assumption that that snow will be placed directly on Pinestone Road. While we recognize that Counselor Thompson is a resident of our district, and he's declared himself to be in conflict of interest on the vote, we're sure he can provide anecdotal evidence as to the difficulties experienced by 19 residents whose garages are served by Graceville views and Rockwood views last winter. This district, because of its only plan approved by a prior council, is in dire need of snow removal and not just snow plowing. Additionally, its residents are required to walk on the roadways within the district, and particularly on Pinestone Road. Safety issues present throughout the winter, and we believe will be further exaggerated in the passing of this rezoning application. Secondly, concerns been expressed by some residents that if this amendment is approved and the units are constructed, the developer may not complete all planned dwellings within the subdivision, and the district will continue to exist in an unfinished state. Specifically, the original indicated and advertised intent of the developer was to build three additional upscale manor-type townhouses on the end of Pinestone Road and one additional three-unit townhouse at the end of Forest Drive. The concern is these units will not be built in the foreseeable future based on the lack of sales of the present adjoining units of the same design. We would request that a specific timeline to complete all dwellings within the district be advised by the developer tonight and form part of the minutes of this council meeting. With regard to the submitted redesign of the dwellings proposed to be built under this rezoning application, we ask the council to direct the planning commission and the building inspector to ensure the height is indicated to adhere to should the rezoning be approved. A copy of this redesign is attached to this document. We ask that be included in the minutes. In summation, in conjunction with this application for rezoning to accommodate the desire for the developer to sell seven additional homes over and above those originally planned, is the expectation of the residents of the neighborhoods of St. Davids that council address the issues of concerns to those residents. Namely, winter snow removal within the district and not just plowing. Completion of all dwellings within the district on a timeline as provided by the developer, and appropriate planning commission approval and building inspector's supervision of the 19 on-street townhouses proposed under this application to ensure they conform to the indicated height limitations on the revised design proposal presented to residents by the developer. On the basis of an assumption of this undertaking by council, the residents of the neighborhoods of St. Davids withdraw our original opposition to the zoning. We congratulate Walker Community Development Corporation for their attention to the concerns of the residents of the original proposed dwelling design, and we look forward to the completion of dwellings within our district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fowler. Appreciate that. Thank you. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Okay. And I note that we have additional correspondence from Mr. and Mrs. David Ivanovich. And Mr. Ivanovich is here. Members of council, it was handed out to you as an additional package with regard to the application. So if there's no further questions, at this time, I'd like to call upon the applicant or his or her representative. Is there somebody here on behalf of the applicant? Welcome. And once again, if you'd be kind enough just to give us your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Kerry Clark. I'm a manager for the local community development.
Thank you. Welcome.
Just to address Mr. Fowler's concerns, the snow removal, there was stated that there is no landscaped area beside the driveways. In fact, there are. Each lot has a grass area beside the driveways. The interior units may not have as much of a grass area, but they're definitely in. Secondly, the concern that the developer may not complete the developments. I can assure you that Walker Community Development, a subsidiary company of Walker, she says no, no interest in leaving the site undone. It's, we will be keeping it long. With respect to a timeline, we wish they could give a realistic timeline. It's obviously a market-driven situation. But there are, there are some new marketing plans we put together. Our general manager of construction, Walker Co. Martini, this year, has been involved in these discussions. Recently, at the site, we've made advances in putting up marketing banners and new signs. And we are actively looking at modifying designs to meet the market as it is now. We have absolutely no reason to leave the site unfinished. We're in agreement with Mr. Darbison's report. We believe that the issues that just came above from the last public meeting have been addressed. We've been actively discussing our approaches on the designs with Mr. Manavich, as well as his neighbor, Mrs. Thompson. And we're committed to continuing that dialogue, make sure that their concerns are properly discussed and addressed.
Thank you very much. Okay. We do have some questions, Mr. Clark. Counselor Inoney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clark, the tone here is entirely different than the last time we had you before us. You doubled number two, that the developer will complete the development. It's our responsibility and our building inspector's responsibility to make sure that that height doesn't go to the limit, right? Quite certainly, the residents are making sure that our building inspectors are keeping the builder in line. I have a problem with your response to number one. While you say there may be landscaping beside the driveways, they're clearly telling you that it's not adequate for when the snow is plowed, that they're asking that it needs to be removed. You're gonna add 19 more units so they can expect that that problem will be exacerbated. Could you not come to some agreement that, or some sort of understanding with the residents there, that maybe you won't just plow it, but Walker Brothers will work out maybe a contract that will remove it? Because to me, that answer didn't answer your concerns on that. Everything else, to me, was taken care of. So can something be done about that?
First of all, I just wanna make it completely clear that this is not a condominium development. And this is a pre-owned townhouse development where Pinestone Road is an municipal road. It's owned by municipal staff. And the driveways, I'm sorry?
No, that makes it easier. Then that's our responsibility. And call us. If it's not being removed, then we will talk to staff. So that makes it even easier. That puts more in our control. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor DiDati?
Yes, Worship. I've got a few. Back to the one, like, Counselor Inoney touched on, the grass areas. You said that there is grass here. How much grass area is it between the units?
The exact dimension? Maybe as wide as five feet.
And as narrow as?
Three.
Okay. So between three and five feet? Okay. And the driveways would be 12 meters long? Okay, okay. Worship, now this would go through, I guess, to Mr. Darbison. In the report, it said that providing maintenance easements for the proposed townhouse should be given when the lands are subdivided. Who does maintenance easements? Who applies for that? Who grants maintenance easements?
Mr. Darbison?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Well, the developer, if this was something that the developer wished to do, this could Well, the developer, if this was something the developer wished to do, this could be included in the original draft plan of subdivision. And what's applied there is that when you subdivide the lots, you could leave a piece at the side or the back as a maintenance easement over somebody else's property to allow for one property owner to enter over another property to get to his backyard. That could be done in that way.
So the developer?
The developer, yes.
Okay. So do you have any intentions about a maintenance easement where the properties are landlocked?
That hasn't been our wish. We, in the previous public meeting, I mentioned that we had dealt with this issue a year and a half ago. You yourself actually had brought this issue forward, and it was agreed by staff, and it was through comments from our company as well, we had several discussions with prospective buyers, where we had deals in place, that if there were maintenance easements that were required, would that be a problem? And the overriding answer was, we would not want maintenance easement across our property. We would wish to deal with that on an individual basis. We don't want just anybody hanging around the back yard. What we found in the development is that people have worked out their issues with their neighbors, and in one case, there has been a set application with easement provided, and that was the careful argument that they brought forward, that concern, a year and a half. So we are comfortable with that situation.
Okay, Counselor?
Yeah, thank you, through your worship. I'm glad, because I want to make sure that it's clear, and I understand the situation you're in. You can't go into your backyard anyway, other than through your house, if you're landlocked in the center of a townhouse. For example, if you want to do some landscaping in the backyard, you know, your choice is to either get permission from your neighbors, which you hope you'll have, or bring your wheelbarrow through your living, right, and work your way to the back. So that's my concern, and I know on the other hand, a lot of people don't want to have unlimited granted access to their backyard, they'd rather be asked, and I understand that. So my question, then, I guess to staff through your worship, when it comes down to part lot control, how do we have notice registered on title that it's a landlocked situation? Because I think it's only fair, although you would sell, you would tell a prospective buyer, which I know you do, you make it quite clear, but then subsequently, the next person that sells it, you know, they may omit that little detail that I think is important, and I think it's important. So my question to staff through your worship is, when would the notice be registered on title from part lot control, is that what I would ask?
I think it's a different issue. Mr. Harbison or Mr. Beeman?
Well, I don't specifically have the answer to that question. Counsel did direct that this matter be put on title. I do, and Mr. Beeman might want to answer, I believe, with perspective, but I'm aware that when you purchase a unit, the real estate people clearly tell you, but this is your unit, and you cannot get back there. It's like buyer everywhere. You are buying this unit under these conditions, usually a property line, this is your unit, and you own this property. And whether or not the city wants to, you know, fully enforce that, we can certainly do it by, you know, something on title, but that would be part of the, it's already a condition of the ground plan. Whether or not it has to be more, Mr. Beeman, or do part lot control or not, is that for you or?
Mr. Beeman?
I'd be inclined to try to put it in the development agreement, but we certainly will get it on there some way, Counselor. It certainly can be done.
Perhaps-
It's just a matter of kind of considering which mechanism might be the most convenient to use to save everybody the most amount of paper, but it could be done.
Perhaps, Mr. Beeman, to answer the question, you may find it more convenient for the developer to incorporate it in the original covenant in the agreement that's passed on and conveyed to subsequent buyers.
Well, it's just what form that agreement is, if the Ms. Fowler's going to have a say. That's the only thing that I'm thinking about. But it's just a matter of which mechanism to pick, Mr. Mayor, there's a number of ways it could be done. We just, questions are a roll, it's not, I'm just trying to think which is the simplest one.
So the question that I think Counselor DiDatti would like answered is, how do we make sure that this is incorporated in the agreement before we proceed on?
I actually think he wanted to know how to get it on title, and what I'm saying is there's a number of ways it could be done.
Sure. So are we going to incorporate that in a requirement for, under the site plan agreement that they come forward with? Are we going to incorporate it as one of the approvals of the plan of subdivision?
It could be in the site plan agreement, it could be in the development agreement, it could be in the subdivision agreement, it could be in the agreement of purchase and sale. Any one of those is a way of doing it.
Sure.
I don't want to recommend one until I've had a chance to think as to which will be the most efficient.
So, members of council, you may want to consider that and allow the solicitor to have some ability to address the matter through whatever appropriate means he feels the city should look at. Is that satisfactory?
Yeah, that's great, worship. I just want to make sure, kind of serve notice, you know, that that's a direction I'm going to, I'd like to see, just as you said, carrying some problems some residents have had in the past in the landlocked backyard after the fact, it makes it very difficult to come in and make it in your backyard. And I have one last question, your worship. In the report, item four, it says, "Snow blowers and trucks have brought in to remove remaining snow," or excess snow. And I just wondered, as a result of the snow clearance, the way the setup is, it could be, in the event that we have excess snow, that might need to be removed. And Mr. Harbison, through your worship, I would ask, who would come in with trucks to remove that remaining snow? Is that the municipal?
Perhaps, Mr. Holman might address that, Mr. Holman?
Yeah, Pine Stone Road is a municipal road, and so the city's forces would be.
So I'm just wondering, are we taking the brunt of some extra expenses, the convenience of the design of the development? Are we setting ourselves up for some extra expenses? It's just a question I ask, I don't know. It was in the report, so I just figured it was thrown in there, I wondered, are we factoring in extra expenses?
Well, with more addresses, you'd get more revenue, I guess, with the other side of that response, but, Mr. Holman?
No, we have an obligation to maintain Pine Stone Road up to the call aside now, so this development will pose no greater challenge.
I understand that, but just in the case we have to pick up snow, take it away physically, that might pose an extra challenge. I wondered if we looked at that, or if we had started to be much of a problem.
Mr. Holman?
What I was looking at best management practices, the areas that are having difficulty, the ones that have the laneways, narrow, going to a Greystone Muse, and-
Yes.
Those areas. It's kind of complicated because of the narrow width, but also because of the exfoliate road, we have to look at, so there are ways to help melt the snow and remove that snow, because we're limited, can't use the standard. Right now, we're using snow plow on the roads, but on all the sides, we're using rollers to remove the snow as best we can. And as we add more people into this community, we're going to have to look at the level of service we're providing and maybe add additional apartment. But that's commonplace, as developments such as this one and the other, it's a very possible.
Yeah, Counsel Ring and Counsel Carryover questions?
Yes, I have some concerns for the issues we're already discussing. We have a correspondence jointly signed by, looks like three presidents, which raises the scenario that where the owners of the dwellings on the end of the units fence their properties to the rear property line, which back onto the extreme hillside, and the question is, what about emergency personnel access to the interior dwellings? Let's say a fire broke out in the rear of one of the middle dwellings, what would happen if the properties on the ends are both fenced right to the hillside? And I guess that's a question perhaps for the fire-
For fire services, he never had a presenting up here. Now, Mr. Harbison, from a planning perspective, do you want to address that?
I could take a stab at that. Building code matters and fire-related matters are all part of the approval process. Before an issue, permit is issued for any of these developments, they have to be fire code, building code, and therefore, this concern that you might have about how do you access the back, probably they don't access the back, they probably fight fires from the front, through the house. That would probably, that is my speculation on how the fire code and building code works, because-
And if somebody were to say, "Architect, why would you rear one of these structures, we have one's personnel access, and we'll be able to get to the inside okay?" Okay, I, that to me was a really good question, you know, what if something happened and emergency personnel needed to be able to access the area? As long as our staff are comfortable that this is being addressed. My other concern was, from another letter, the resident in question pointed out, they can't park overnight on Pine Stone Road, and they have no driveways to speak of. I realize this is a problem in, already existing in a portion of the development that's already been built, but we have the potential for the problem to be added to by adding new residences. What is going to be done to address the problems already existing?
Mr. Clark?
The designs are double-car garages, depending on how people utilize the garages, there's potential for two cars to park on the garages. With the twelve-meter-long driveways, there's also room for two, four cars to park on the driveway as well.
Okay, this is in the new townhouses, I'm proposing. Now, what if the units that are already built and being moved in, where they can't park on the road, some of them really don't have driveways, what is being done to address the problems already existing? Because I am gathering that there's very limited guest parking in the area, and I have the owners of the new units decide to throw a party, and they've got their cars in the garage, and the driveways full, obviously their guests are also going to be looking to go someplace. So what is going to be done to address the problem of guest parking, overflow parking for the development as a whole?
The last public meeting, there was a considerable discussion about that issue. At any time, I've had discussions with Mr. Harbison, and staff have also looked into it as well. I've had some other discussions in addition to that, and in the report, it does mention that there is opportunity for people to park overnight. There can be leniency from the city enforcing, and as part of the design that we did initially, we met all of the parking requirements, and there seemed to be a bit of a perception that people were not allowed to park overnight in the development, and that, I believe, is a bit of a misunderstanding. If I could, I'd like to, Mr. Harbison, and possibly clarify that.
I know there's some disagreement from within the gallery as well. I'd like to try and get this to address, now that we have some of these forums.
Okay, let's move forward, and it's Mr. Harbison, and we'll try to get some questions answered here.
Mr., I repeat, I would like to address this matter. On page three of our report, on the third paragraph, this is the information that was provided to us by traffic services. These, the existing units are sold, they are operating, they meet minimum requirements, and our traffic services people are suggesting that they could, on occasion, they could apply to the city for overnight parking permits, and they can advise traffic services about special events so that the city could be lenient. It's not up to the developer to look after this matter, this is not a city matter. The development has met all requirements, and there are ways suggested in this report by our traffic services people to accommodate the interests of those people that are situated in the townhouses that are accessed by rear lanes and have more limited parking than, say, the new, than the new project. That's why I draw your attention to point number three, or paragraph number three.
And perhaps, Mr. Harbison, you might just want to qualify, in the subdivision that was approved, were there applicants, was applicant providing suitable visitor parking for the just anticipated number of visitors that occur from time to time?
No, I think that question was raised in my answer before, just to clarify, there was no visitor parking to be provided in that area.
Was it a requirement of our city by law?
No, and it was not a requirement.
Okay. Alun Wing?
I think this is the time now to try and address the problem that exists and get some visitor parking.
I don't know what we can do legally, and I think either our legal department may advise us, but I'm not sure what we can do to this development in respect of what already has been approved, and we've heard our planners say that, is that correct, Mr. Harbison? Is there anything that this council could do to?
That is correct. There's no obligation on the developer to buy over and above the minimum parking requirements in that area.
There's nothing at all that the city can do?
Other than operational matters that I spoke here to, those matters can be addressed by the city, but no, they meet all requirements. Building permits have been issued, minimum standards of parking have been met.
See, I just find this whole development to be rather unique, you know, it's my neighborhood, you can't park on Parker Street beside another side street nearby that you can park on, but this whole thing comes off a regional road, and you can't park on the regional road, and it's a long ways to find a side street that you can park on. So there is a problem which exists that I'd like to try and find a way to address.
Mr. Harbison, can you address that?
And we have the developer in front of us, it seems to me like this is the time to find some way.
Well, he hasn't approved plan of subdivision already, and this higher council's approved it, so it could have come up then, but he met the requirements of the parking at that time, and our developer, sorry, director of planning development is telling us that the application meets the minimum requirement. So I don't think there's anything, other than if our legal council can advise us, or our planner, our director of planners, is there anything further that either you two gentlemen could recommend?
No, there's not. And again, this development is approved, and it was approved based on the standards of the day. I should make some commentary here. This is a, it is a unique development, it was, it's the first of its kind to provide the laneways, I mean, the city used, once was built with laneways and so forth, and some houses didn't have parking in the front. This is very similar to what may have happened in the past, but it's a new form of development, it's called new urbanism, and it's more compact development, and the, one of the intentions here was fewer cars. It would be a walkable community, people would be, would live here because they would enjoy to walk, have fewer vehicles and so forth. There are situations where people, you know, you buy a home, you have a double-car garage, you do have some visitors, I mean, those things weren't really accommodated in terms of minimum standards for this development, but the development has been approved, it's all approved, you know, many, many years ago, and that's the standard of the day, and it continues to be the standard of the day. As indicated in our report today, on-street townhouses, freehold on-street townhouses have a minimum requirement of one parking space per unit. That's the same requirement today as it was then, but the developer is now actually providing more parking for each individual unit than he did in the past. And there's no, there's nothing more that the city could do other than operational matters, as I mentioned.
Counselor Carryo?
I will wait to make my comments when you close the meeting, your worship.
Okay. Any other comments or questions of the developer? Any questions from the gallery? Yes, sir? Please come forward.
I find it interesting that Mr. Clark is reluctant to provide a timeline on the basis of it being market-driven, yet this rezoning application is nothing other than a market-driven rezoning application. I think whether it's four years or five years or whatever, that we would look to this developer to establish a timeline, finish as well as within the district.
Mr. Clark, could you address that further?
This development was approved, forgive me, Brad, I don't, I can't remember the exact date, but it was one, seven years ago. We've been working away at this development. Unfortunately, the Niagara market is not the Toronto market, and we can't just build the houses and expect them to sell. What we're doing is attempting to customize the houses for the people that are purchasing, we build a certain number of units. From an economic standpoint, we try to minimize our inventory, but also have enough inventory to act on the market when it's up, so they have some units available if people are interested, and then they can talk to our building department and our building division and make modifications to these units. For us to go ahead and construct the rest of the units and have those carrying charges, it just makes it very difficult for us to compete against the other builders in Niagara or anywhere else in southern Ontario. We are committed to building this development out, and believe me, there's no one who wants it built up quicker than we do. The longer it goes on, the more carrying charges we have. It really is as simple as that, but we'd love to say that we're going to have this developed out in two to three years.
I think we understand that, Mr. Clark, I appreciate your comment, thank you. Counselor Carryo?
Just a question, Mr. Harbison, we have related a condition, but is it a time limit on a development?
No, we have not.
I think that would be nice of the developer to promise that he'd have a guaranteed return, but unfortunately, our market is such, we understand that, so you're putting your money in the ground and in the building, we understand that too, so I'm sure you'd like to- so I'm sure you'd like to have us sold as quickly as possible. So, members of council, if there's no further questions at this time, I'm going to declare the public meeting closed with respect to this application and ask for the pleasure of counsel. Counselor Iannone?
Move of recommendation.
Moved by counsel, in a second by counsel Carrio. Any further discussion, comments? Having seen none, others in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you again. Mr. Clark, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw for a 30-story, 383-room hotel at 6505 Falls View Boulevard. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 17, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the signed sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. At this time, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darbison?
Thank you, Mr. Darbison, Mr. Counsel. The subject application is located at 505 Falls View Avenue. The components are Fisher, Karen, and Anatella, and the post office on 30th Park Hotel 3. In terms of location map, the subject land is located within the block to South District of the Falls View Boulevard. The rest of the block is owned by another party. To the north is the, we're in a high-rise development district here. To the north, we have the Renaissance. To the west, we have the Oaks Inn and Athletes. South of this property is vacant at present time, but it's a developable site. And to the west, there's restaurants and the population. The proposed application is for a site-specific tourist commercial zone to prevent a 30-story, 383-room hotel, and allow the majority of the hotel's parking to be provided off-site. The site is currently zoned tourist commercial, and the special regulations restricting the length of four stories. This is the whole site plan of the project. The tower portion is shown, the proposed 30-story tower hotel is shown, marked on the site plan. And to the west and to the south, there is a two- and three-story lower-rise podium feature. The proposed development of the 30-story high-rise hotel on the approximately half acre of our land represents a significant departure from council's official plan policies and approved design guidelines. The proposal represents an overdevelopment of the site and creates significant environmental impacts on adjacent lands. The following matters should be considered. We refer to here as various principles, and these principles are both contained in the official plan and the council guidelines for built form. The proposal does not meet the Skyview principle contained in the city's urban design objectives. The official plan requires-- The subject application is located at 505 Falls View Avenue. The components are Fisher, Karen, and Anatella, and the post office on 30th Park Hotel 3. In terms of location map, the subject land is located within the block to South District of the Falls View Boulevard. The rest of the block is owned by another party. To the north is the, we're in a high-rise development district here. To the north, we have the Renaissance. To the west, we have the Oaks Inn and Athletes. South of this property is vacant at present time, but it's a developable site. And to the west, there's restaurants and the population. The proposed application is for a site-specific tourist commercial zone to prevent a 30-story, 383-room hotel, and allow the majority of the hotel's parking to be provided off-site. The site is currently zoned tourist commercial, and the special regulations restricting the length of four stories. This is the whole site plan of the project. The tower portion is shown, the proposed 30-story tower hotel is shown, marked on the site plan. And to the west and to the south, there is a two- and three-story lower-rise podium feature. The proposed development of the 30-story high-rise hotel on the approximately half acre of our land represents a significant departure from council's official plan policies and approved design guidelines. The proposal represents an overdevelopment of the site and creates significant environmental impacts on adjacent lands. The following matters should be considered. We refer to here as various principles, and these principles are both contained in the official plan and the council guidelines for built form. The proposal does not meet the Skyview principle contained in the city's urban design objectives. The official plan requires building mass for high-rise hotels to be reduced above the podium level, and that separation distances be used between buildings to avoid a wall of buildings, allow light penetration, and gaps between buildings, and possible views for second and third-tier developments. The proposed building satisfied the built form for maximum floor place area, maximum width-to-length ratio, and percentage of building-to-lock coverage, but it does not satisfy any of the provisions for the separation of towers. And at that point, I'll note that there is property to the south and to the west where there's still development potential, and also in the form of towers. Approval of this proposal could set an undesirable precedent for future development in this general area and does not protect the sky view of other properties. Architectural peer review. The proposal is not recommended by the architectural peer review panel. The official plan requires high-rise buildings over 10 stories in height to have a complete architectural peer review. The applicant attended six preconsultation meetings with the panel. The panel had significant concerns about the massing and location of the building. The applicant prepared a further design, which is a subject to this application. The APR final report notes that the applicant has improved the surface treatment and roof design, but no change was made to the general massing of the tower and did not address the principal concern about lack of sufficient setbacks. Another principle in the design guidelines is, concerns public realm at grade. The proposal does not satisfy the public realm at grade principle. A podium is an essential part of parade human scale at the street level. This is achieved by setting a tower back 10 meters above the podium along street frontages. The lack of podium also appears to exacerbate microclimate impacts at the street level because of the sheer wall effects, this is the downward effect of wind coming off a tall building. Another principle is the positive microclimate principle. The development will create a severe impact on pedestrians and conflicts with the positive microclimate principle. The pedestrian realm, as well as adjacent properties in Queen Victoria Park, are to be protected from wind and other microclimate impacts. The wind study for the project identifies significant potential problems, and these include the following. Due to the wind conditions which are created by this building, there will be safety failure at the corner of Dixon Street and Falls View Boulevard and along Falls View Boulevard immediately south of the proposed hotel. Wind gusts over 55 miles per hour are forecasted, meaning that these locations may be hazardous for pedestrian use. Wind conditions along Falls View Avenue and Dixon Street sidewalks adjacent to the proposed hotel will be uncomfortable after the hotel is constructed. Consultants have suggested wind screens and columnar oak trees within the city sidewalk, as well as screens along the building facade. These measures become necessary because the building does not provide the preferred podium and building setbacks intended to address the sheer wall effects. Now, just, the next two slides are just taken out of the wind study report, and I provide these just to give counsel a bit of an overview of the wind effects. The legend is very hard to read, but a wind study concerns itself with pedestrian comfort levels and pedestrian safety. Now, in terms of comfort levels, there are criteria for winds, velocity of winds which are comfortable for sitting, and these usually apply to cafe areas, like outdoor cafes. And the color there for sitting would be orange. The next comfort level is standing, the wind velocity is a little higher. The standing comfort level is okay for bus stops, benches along streets, and that type of thing. The next level, a little bit higher wind velocity, is for sidewalks and intersections. This is like a walking, generally speaking, walking along sidewalks, you should have a comfort level in this area. This is shown in blue. And to exceed those levels of wind velocity, you get into the yellow markings, and those areas will be above the three comfort levels included in the study. Now, there's also pedestrian safety concerns, and these are generally shown where, in a red, in a red circle around some of these indicators. And safety means that the wind effects will adversely affect pedestrian balance and footing. So if you're walking along the street and you have a safety concern, it's likely to be blowing the pedestrian along, and it would be a safety matter as well. So this diagram is for, it's, the summer period is actually a better period because there's lots of foliage on trees and so forth. This is, this is the kind of comfort and safety features that would occur in the wintertime. And as indicated, most of the area, general area, is good for walking, but the yellow areas are areas that will be uncomfortable and also invoke pedestrian safety concerns. Now, the next slide is a slide that shows some mitigation. It's the hotel that goes up, and with some mitigation that could occur. Again, this is the winter, in the winter season. And by providing a screen along the westerly side yard, kind of like a solid screen, it's indicated in a red line, there could be some reduction in impacts if the developer provided that kind of screen. And also along the sidewalk areas, shown in gray, that's where you would provide additional tree plantings and so forth, but they would have to be of a coniferous-type variety so that in the wintertime, there would still be mitigation, the trees would still mitigate some winds. So it is possible to reduce some of the environmental effects, but still, this is an application where it actually shows that the development will provide impacts beyond the site and into the public realm. The next, go back a little bit. In terms of another matter, parking circulation, this is another criterion in the guidelines. This principle provides that as a general rule, parking for new developments should be provided on the site. The APR panel raises concerns about the development's reliance on off-site parking and the distance between the hotel and the off-site parking lot. The parking lot proposed here is the parking lot off of Dunn Street. Staff notes that zoning currently allows parking to be off-site. However, the provision was granted when the site was proposed for a restaurant and entertainment use within a four-story building. Staff remains opposed to locating the majority of required parking for the site on the Dunn Street parking lot due to the impacts on surrounding streets and on the residential areas surrounding the parking lot. In terms of zoning, the requested zoning amendment, we believe is not appropriate. The proposed zoning would increase the permitted height of the building on this property from 50 feet to 358 feet. Due to lack of compliance with the built form guidelines and the adverse street-level wind impacts, the request, we believe, is not appropriate. The proposal is considered an overdevelopment of the site, as it would be one of, among the tallest and most dense developments in the city. The proposed density on this project is actually 910 rooms per acre. And if you compare that to other developments, for example, the Marriott has a, has a density, if I can find it, about one-third of this, it's a little less than 300 units per acre, and the Embassy is about half of this, in around the 400 units per acre mark. So it's, we're only providing you an indication of, that is a bit of an overdevelopment of the site. We have not really seen densities of this magnitude in our city on such small parcels of land. The proposed amendment appears to increase the density, the dependency on the site for off-site parking. It's our conclusion that the proposed bylaw amendment cannot be supported for the following reasons. It does not comply with the official plan with respect to built form regulations, does not represent good planning, as it is an overdevelopment of the site. The architectural peer review panel does not support the development due to lack of conformity with built form guidelines. There will be adverse wind conditions created at the street level as a result of the hotel, and the reliance on on-street, on off-site parking to meet the parking requirements for an intensified development is not supported by staff. Should counsel wish to consider supporting a project of this magnitude on this block, it should be on the basis of a land assembly to enlarge the parcels so that a proper form of development could be built on a larger parcel of land. It's our recommendation this evening that counsel deny this particular application as it does not meet the intent of the official plan, is not supported by the architectural peer review panel, and the hotel creates significant microclimate impacts on private properties and the public realm. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darbison. Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Counsel will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Does anyone present who wishes to speak to this bylaw amendment? Please come forward. And counsel, you do have a letter from Terxstra Maza, as well as a denim to your package. Will you refer you to that as well? Enter your name, please, for the benefit of the record.
Good evening, Your Worship. My name is Peter Kickfield, K-I-C-K-F-I-E-L-E. I am a lawyer with Sister Law Firm of Terxstra Maza. Mr. Terxstra was available for tonight.
Great.
But I've been involved in this while also, and we're jointly retained by, I'll just let him find his own moment, by our name of our firm, Garrett Kickfield.
Garrett Kickfield?
My partner, Garrett Kickfield.
Thank you very much.
And I've left my name on the list so that I can receive future information.
Great, thank you.
Looking forward to Mr. Terxstra on this matter. You've received information, Your Worship, and members of counsel from Mr. Terxstra, as well as from a landscape, or an architect, rather, who has reviewed this matter in a preliminary way, and I'll come back to that in a moment. I should just start by indicating that we act for the abiding landowners to the immediate northwest and the immediate south of the property. And the names for our clients are Playas Enterprises INC., Period, and Comfort Inn Falls View INC., Period, and you'll find that on the letter from Mr. Terxstra that I just took. Our clients have a hotel proposal that they're developing immediately south of this proposal on the parking lot. Counsel might be aware that there's a commercial parking lot that's in the middle to the south of our client's lands. There's also the Chalet Restaurant, which is in the northwest corner. And so what our clients are faced with is both existing tenant who's impacted by this proposal and also development rights with respect to future proposal. And that's what I'm trying to focus, my submissions will be to you tonight. So I have two submissions, two general submissions for you. The first is that we support what the planning report is telling you, the staff report is telling you, which is, in my submission, quite unequivocal, and really, an immediately strong report and also well-considered one. And that planning report is telling you that the application cannot be supported. And there were four main reasons for that, and I'm just going to summarize the police that are reporting to my client, and I'm just going to quickly summarize those. First, that the proposal just simply doesn't comply with existing design guideline rules. It doesn't comply with, it doesn't comply with the rules to game here with respect to an application of this magnitude and scale, and therefore doesn't conform to the official plan. The second is that a peer review has been conducted, a very thorough one, to look at the site relationship to the design guidelines, the design issues and planning issues, and that peer review is also very strong and unequivocal, and this application cannot be supported. The third thing is that there are impacts associated with, and this is a concern for our client, because we draw through the restaurant operation, we draw business to this area and pedestrian traffic to this area. This runs completely counter to the idea of pedestrian traffic, et cetera, because of the wind conditions that are created and the effect, and I think that the planner explained to you pretty clearly that issue, and it's a very serious one. And the fourth issue relates to parking on the site, and it doesn't comply with existing parking rules. I think that the-- I think that the, the application indicates that there are plenty available on-site, on-site spots compared to a need for, which is, which only covers about 10% of the need, and then literally rolling on an off-street parking. That creates both traffic issues as well as not being appropriate planning, and in not compliance with the rules again. So from our, just to focus down, I think I've indicated what's, this, staff's focus has been on the general public interest, and it is appropriate, but from our client's perspective, even drilling down a little bit deeper, the two sets of concerns are the serious impacts associated with the existing use, uses, use on the property, and the concern is both traffic and wind, wind effects. And one ugly issue, and we'll get back to it in a different moment, are the traffic issues, which aren't really a property dealt with in this application, not really touched upon in the, in the, in the staff report, but a concern to our client. The second serious concern is, is that it compromises the future development on the properties itself. And that's a significant concern, because our client is planning a similar hotel proposal on those lands, and we're trying our best, through our work with our consultants, to try and meet the planning rules that are in place. And if these planning rules aren't met, it directly compromises in terms of our ability to build a similar type of hotel structure on our, on our site. There's a need for both integration of the two projects if they're going to work together. And secondly, if this one goes ahead, not in compliance with the planning rules, then our development rights will be directly compromised, because we won't be able to have our development proceed even if, even if it's within those same planning rules. So that's the, the fundamental concern. You have a, a letter from Mr. Lesdaw, who's an architect, he sets those out in detail, those concerns in a preliminary way. But the overall submission to you, and a summary of first submission to you, is that you should simply follow your planning staff's good advice and refuse this application. It's not ready to go ahead, it isn't properly developed, it doesn't meet the planning rules that are in place, and it has impacts, serious impacts, both on existing and on future development. The second submission to you is that if you are in any way contemplating, I'm not suggesting you should, but if you are in any way contemplating, considering approval of this development, that consideration of approval is also premature, mature, and shouldn't happen tonight. And from my client's perspective, the main reason for that is that the, our client has, has been working over the last few weeks since it received public notice on retaining a planner to conduct a more detailed review of the integration of this proposal with our client's proposal. It's a complex and a detailed matter, it involves some expertise with respect to high-rise buildings and their impacts. Our clients have now retained that planner, it's taken some time, I can, quite frankly, I can tell you it's taken some time, in part because of the number of conflicts our client has found with existing planners in the area related to this development and to the city's work. But we have found an excellent planner from Toronto, who's able to provide some expertise on this issue. To complete the work would be six to eight weeks, to complete the planner's work, and there would be some priority to do this within that six to eight weeks, if council's actually considering approval here. But we would ask that at the very least, if council doesn't refuse this matter immediately, and it is considering approval, that it provide the time for our client, in fairness, to provide that detailed planning report to you. So those are my two general sets of submissions, subject to your questions, those are, that's what I need to tell you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McPhill. Questions of Ms. Pickfield? Yes, Counsel Daddi?
Just one quick, Your Worship, just Mr. Pickfield, may I comment about problem taking time to find a planner because of conflicts among planners? I didn't quite pick up that point.
Yeah, well, I, 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 this again is for Mr. Terxstra. Mr. Terxstra has been working over the last several weeks to try and find a planner with the appropriate expertise to conduct a more detailed review. You have a preliminary report from an architect, from us, but you don't have a planning report. And in, in doing that, he has consulted the usual planners that our client works with, that he's worked with in the Hamilton area. And for some reason, there are, they are all in some fashion conflicted out, and the conflict probably relates to the fact that they have related business in the perspective of either the city or with the applicant, and so that's the problem, and so it's.
Okay, any other questions of Mr. Pickfield? Okay, thank you very much for your submission, sir. Is there anyone else, other than the applicant, who wishes to speak to this matter? Is there anyone else, other than the applicant, who wishes to speak to this matter? Okay, at this time then, I'm going to ask the council to hear from the applicant. You come forward, please.
Members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start with my very brief presentation.
Just for the record, obviously.
Italian prepared to provide the partners on board the developer 2100422 material with two zeros in the agenda, and the principles of that are good during the power of management challenges.
Thank you.
As I, as I indicated, just after I finished my very brief presentation, I'd like to have the project architect, who is also here tonight, Mr. Murray, just give a very brief description of the public level of the building as well. My client and I have reviewed the staff report and respectfully disagreed with the recommendation to deny this application, because the zoning bylaw amendment is appropriate for the area in which the proposed development is situated, with respect to the location of the proposal. The subject lands are located in the middle of the Fallsview Sub-District, exactly where high-rise hotel buildings have been approved and built. The lands are located across the street from the casino, the Fallsview Casino Resort, and a block over from the proposed convention center. The staff report recognizes that the proposed building satisfies the built form for maximum floor plate area, maximum width to length ratio, and a percentage of building to law percentage. Mr. Peter Colosimo's letter from the Niagara Regional Planning Department states, quote, "The site is located in the region's urban area boundary for Niagara Falls according to the regional policy plan. The proposed development conforms to the provincial policy statement, provincial growth plan, and regional policy plans from a general land use perspective," unquote. These comments are significant, as they illustrate that the proposed hotel is situated exactly where this type of development was contemplated. In fact, all sewer and water infrastructure has been placed in this area to accommodate exactly this type of development. The proposed hotel is in keeping with the type of development that has occurred in the area or has been approved. This development will service exactly the type of visitors to Niagara Falls that wish to stay in this area. Generally, visitors want to stay on Fallsview Boulevard, close to the casino, the falls, the parks, and now the proposed convention center. With respect to the architectural peer review panel report, as you are aware, the applicant met with the panel approximately six times to discuss the proposed development. To my knowledge, that's unheard of, six pre-submission needed. The final submission, which is before you tonight, is the result of many, many compromises made by the applicant while adhering to the recommendations made by the panel. For example, in the panel's addendum dated August 23rd, the panel states, quote, "There have been improvements in the architectural design to articulate the base, middle, top concept, tripartite elevation, the vitality at street level, landscape and street activity potential, and generally better legibility and proportion of the building design," unquote. While the proposal does not meet the one recommendation listed in the implementation handbook, Skyview Principle, which requires the largest separation between towers than is provided, I would like to quote directly from the handbook, which states, "The recommended guidelines are in conformity with the official plan and intended to be illustrative and exemplary rather than descriptive for regulatory." In other words, these guidelines are simply that, guidelines. There have been numerous departures from the guidelines in the past, and most likely again in the future. This parcel of land simply cannot accommodate the required guidelines because of its size. That does not mean that the subject lands are not suitable for a three-story hotel. This is exactly where this type of development should be built and is needed. With respect to off-site parking, the subject lands have been studied and approved by city council on several occasions with respect to off-site parking, not only in the course of zoning amendment applications, but also part of an official plan amendment. Therefore, the subject lands have been married with the off-site parking lot fronting on the south side of Dunn Street for many years. Delcan Corporation, the traffic consultant retained by the applicant, has studied this area in great detail, and has submitted a report supporting the development with respect to the less than 200 off-site parking spaces. This report has not been contradicted. Many hotels in the area offer off-site parking. However, this applicant considers the safety of its hotel guests, their vehicles, hotel staff, and the community to be of utmost significance. For this reason, the applicant has undertaken many measures to secure safe. For example, a radar signboard has been installed by my client on Dunn Street, alleviating speeding concerns, and also addressing the concerns raised by the Police Services Board. With respect to the wind speed, the applicant's consultant, RWDI, has stated in its report that, quote, "The addition of the proposed Hampton Inn development had an insignificant effect on wind speed and direction in the Taylor Rock area," end quote. The report further states, in, quote, "In the mid-aidal configuration, all locations met the criteria during the summer season. In the proposed configuration, an increase in the number of locations that did not meet this criteria was noted primarily in the winter," unquote. However, and most importantly, RWDI finalized its results by stating, quote, "With some additional involvement from RWDI at the detailed design stage," i.e. which means the site plan stage, "a wind climate suitable for the proposed usage can be achieved," unquote. This is an important comment, because that means, when the site plan drawings are completed, RWDI will confirm that a suitable wind climate will be achieved by installing appropriate mitigation measures. That is the appropriate time when matters of this nature are dealt with. I'd like to present a letter that I just received at 4:36 this afternoon from RWDI Without reading the entire letter, I'll just read the highlighted version. In the principal results section, page two, it's pointed out that with some additional involvement with RWDI at the detailed design stage, a wind climate suitable for the proposed usage can be achieved. In particular, attention is drawn to one such example in the first paragraph on page 10, where it stated that additional development of wind control measures, such as coniferous trees and coniferous planters, would be required for wind control during the winter. It is the opinion of RWDI that wind conditions suitable for the proposed year-round pedestrian use of the area of, of this area of Niagara Falls can be achieved with project design revisions such as those referenced above. It would also appear from page three of three in the architectural peer review addendum dated August 23rd, that the peer review panel would concur with the RWDI recommendation that additional testing is needed to develop these revisions. It does not suggest the project to turn down due to the wind conditions reported. What does this application mean to Niagara Falls? Aside from the most important fact that the proposal is located directly in the heart of the Fallsview Sub-District, which is the ideal location for this type of development, this proposal will provide 2,000 construction jobs, 500 full-time employment opportunities, and needless to say, impressive perpetual tax revenues. We respectfully suggest that the, that the proposal does comply with the official plan with respect to the built form regulations, with the exception of the setback. As previously mentioned, it does meet the built form for maximum floor plate area, maximum width to length ratio, and percentage, percentage of building to law percentage. The proposal is situated exactly where this type of development, development was envisioned by OPA number 26, and is accepted by the regional policy and guidelines. There will be no adverse wind conditions created that cannot be rectified at the site plan stage. Off-site parking was approved many years ago, and will continue to function safely without incident or complaint. For these reasons, we kindly request it to approve the application and direct staff to prepare the bylaw and the Section 37 agreement for approval by you on the next, at the next council meeting, which I understand is September 24th. Please answer any questions.
Members of council, any questions of Ms. Gilberti? Yes, Counsel Daddi?
Ms. Gilberti, so do I understand you that additional work will be done on wind conditions at site plan stage?
Yes, Counsel Daddi?
One question for Ms. Gilberti, is in regard to setbacks, what, you made mention that everything was informed to, with the exception, in the build deadline, with, with...
The build form regulation.
Right, with the exception.
Of the setback.
Right, we can, you know, the latter, the sum of it.
Those matters that I referred to earlier, which are the tests located within the, within the handbook. And I summarize those as the floor to ratio plate, and the, the maximum floor plate area, the maximum width to length ratio, there's a certain percentage that has to be met between that, and the percentage of building to law percentage. The past on all those fronts, where it falls short, this is this issue with respect to setbacks. Now, it's not meeting the intended guideline of 12 and a half meters, it's, it's come short now to six meters. But, but that's just simply a guideline. The property is what the property is, there, there'd be nothing built if, if we had to meet that guideline.
Yes, Counsel Maves?
Hi, Your Worship, I'm not sure who this, the question is for, but mention of the architectural review panel, could someone elaborate on who that, just who that comprised of?
Sure, the director of planning, Mr. Darvison?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. This particular panel, it does vary, but this particular panel is comprised of Mr. David Hastings, he's from the consulting firm, IBI, and they were the authors of the implementation handbook. There's another architect out of Hamilton-Burlington that sits on the panel, and also our own Jamie Douglas, the landscape architect, sits on the panel. Those are the three members.
Members of council, any other questions? Ms. Gilberti, I have a question, notwithstanding there's no setback at the tower, how would you propose the development to the south would be impacted if there are windows on that side of the tower, on the south side of the tower, affecting any future development by a neighboring property?
There is a setback to the south. The setback to the south is six meters.
On, on the south side?
Correct.
Okay. And with that issue, then, I'm sure there'll be a concern by the applicant adjacent to, in their development, to having windows across from each other if they're proposing a hotel where basically, actually, essentially, guests can view each other's windows back and forth, so I'm not sure what you propose with respect to any, any mitigation of that event happening?
Lines? That would be the only logical explanation to that.
Yes. Mr. Darvison, is that essentially the reason for, for your position in respect to this application?
No, privacy is not, it's not a criteria at all. Council's established guidelines for high-rise buildings, and those guidelines are proper separations between towers. And as a minimum, developers on greenfield sites need to set their buildings back 12 and a half meters, 25 feet. We have here a setback on the west side of zero, with respect to the adjacent property, and six meters with respect to the south. So they are, the tower portion of the proposal does not meet criteria either on the west or either on the south. And the second port, piece of that is that setbacks from street allowances. Podiums need to be, podiums define the, the street at, at about three stories. The towers are set back from that, and therefore, there's zero setback from the, there's no podium on any of the street frontages. The podiums are at the back of the property, and they don't help at the back of the property, because wind deflection needs to occur at the, the street frontages. So those are the two reasons that it doesn't comply with the guidelines.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, members of council? If not, then at this time, I'm going to announce the public meeting with respect to these...
I'd like to have the project architect, Mr. Murray, dress issue the podium.
Okay, thank you.
With respect also, when I get an opportunity just to respond to...
Yes, you will, if you could allow Mr. Murray to make his comments, and certainly we could see if your concerns are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, we have prepared a series of renderings, which I think are more helpful in trying to visualize how this property has been developed, and why it does, in fact, in our opinion, satisfy most of the criteria of the implementation handbook. And I don't have enough for everybody to keep a copy, but I, I have a few copies that I'd like to distribute. Some of them are here. The 3D renderings show the building as it's actually seen, which is an oblique view. There's a view looking north on Main Street, and you'll observe that the building appears to be sitting on a podium, because it is on a podium. Looking south from Stanley Avenue, you'll see the south projection on the right side of the building with a podium. The view looking south through on Fallsview also shows a podium on the right side. Furthermore, the first floor is reset 15 feet back from the property line. The property line is also 10 feet further back from the original property line due to the city road lining. This provides 25 feet plus the city sidewalk of pedestrian space. The second floor also reset 15 feet back. The third floor is well 15 feet back. The fourth floor is 10 feet back. The visual effect of the podium is being maintained that you see more easily in the rendering than you do in any of the flat combination drawings that were presented with. The Skyview Principle also says we want air facing clean buildings of high-rise nature. This unusual site faces three streets, so obviously, we have the Skyview Principle on three sides of the building. Fallsview Boulevard, Dixon, and Main Street all have more than the required spades of 25 meters, meaning being high-rise buildings from over there. The neighbors' concerns, I'd like to address as well because the property part of Dixon and Main Street is actually improved from a development point of view because we are building up to his property line. If we did acknowledge that there would be a setback, then he would also have a setback in building according to the Implementation Guidelines. I'm so much confused why you would object to this proposal when it in fact enhances the development potential of that property. That concludes my comments essentially. If I should clarify that the serious efforts have been made to develop the visual effect of a podium is really what is there for, with the requirement is there for.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Any questions of Mr. Murray? Okay. No questions by members of council. Mr. Pickfield, you have a question?
Just...
Please come forward.
Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, the last comment that was made, I'm not sure how you could make claim that this proposal in any way enhances the development potential of our client's property. Our client is trying to develop a property which meets the design guidelines. This one involves not just a subtle, but a fundamental breach of those design guidelines, a 50% reduction. And on the north side of the property, there's a zero setback for the towers. So this is really cramming of a building in to get the maximum number of units in their hotel unit, and putting aside good planning to do that. And I would strongly urge you to listen to your staff on this and not allow this to go forward. And quickly, on the issues that council raised, with respect to the parking issue, the one thing I want to make very clear is that there is going to be a traffic problem on this site, particularly when our client's development goes through. Because our client is proposing development of a similar scale, there's going to be 500 additional cars in peak times here, and these two developments are going to be going forward concurrently, potentially going forward, so that those peak times will happen concurrently. The two hotels will have their peak hours during checkout times and checkout times and during check-in times, and they'll be at the same point in time. The roads around this site are not prepared to deal with this kind of an influx, and there needs to be a traffic study done. There hasn't been a proper traffic study done on this. That's a significant deficiency in this proposal. With respect to my friend's comment that it doesn't... that it satisfies to keep a number of the criteria, she didn't emphasize, and of course she wouldn't, that it doesn't satisfy two of the fundamental criteria, the design criteria. One is the tower separation, which is fundamental. It deals with... It's an impact issue because it's an issue with respect to wind, and it's an issue with respect to the important visual privacy issues that council identified, and it does substantially impact our client's ability to develop their property, and that has not been studied or looked at. And the podium form has not been respected here, and just pointing to a couple of podium feature and pictures does not mean it's been respected. The podium form is spelled out in the guideline. With respect to the comment about unprecedented six pre-submission meetings, I would suggest you that it's unprecedented because the peer review panel was having so much difficulty with the proposal, and so there were a series of meetings after which the proposals that peer review panel still could not be satisfied that we're approaching something acceptable in terms of approval here. And then, the other comment that I wanted to comment upon is the idea that we can wait till the site design stage to address the issues with respect to setback and with respect to the design guidelines. And I would say that's like council, to use a quote, we're just tying one of their hands behind their back. We can now at zoning stage have an opportunity to truly address these issues. For council to just sort of give up on that approach at this stage and just trust the design stage for it really takes away a lot of the tools they would have available to address the deficiencies that we've got. And with respect to the jobs issue that was raised, I can say our client is also in the business of providing a hotel facility to provide additional jobs. So if you're going to do the cost and benefit analysis of this, take a look at the potential loss development to the south, and there needs to be something done to integrate these two developments. I'm not suggesting that both developments can't go ahead, but there needs to be additional work done and thought given to properly integrating these two developments before they be approved. So that's why my suggestion to you is either refuse a time, or if you don't refuse, at the very least, provide a deferral of this matter for six weeks so that we can provide that detailed information that will allow for a better application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pickfield. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Gilberti?
Oh, question.
Do you have a question? I'm sorry, first of all, Counsel Iannoni, question of Mr. Pickfield?
I have a question so much to the statement to one of his comments in regards to the traffic problem that we have to take place. In our regional comments, it says, "Regional Public Works has received the traffic report prepared by Delkan." I'm assuming it would be based on this development? And has advised that there are no objections to the proposed development since the site fronts on a local road will be connected directly to local sewer and water services. And I'll just say, as we were passing, or voting against passing, the mega hotels that are being built down there, we saw traffic study after traffic study after traffic study coming tell us when you built the New Fallsview Casino, that road was built to handle a whole lot more than we have down there. And as a matter of fact, we've heard time and time again that we didn't see the traffic down there that we anticipated when the original studies for the casino were done. So we haven't even come close to maximizing the traffic ability that we can put on the roads down there, and the region doesn't seem to have any problem with it.
I think at the regional level, they're looking, they may be looking at the main thoroughfares, but the two smaller roads in this area need some improvements, and we think a traffic study is needed. And also, I don't think the regional comments will take into account our client's development and the cumulative impacts of those two things. So that's why I would suggest that there needs to be...
Thank you for your comment. Yes, I don't want to debate this. Do you have another point you'd like to make?
Yeah, that's what I'm here for. Your clients' development, that they will be bringing to council in the future?
Yeah.
Okay. But we can only deal with the application before us now, not the application that your client may bring in the future.
That's fair enough, but our client does have existing development rights which are being compromised too, as a right development.
Thank you, Mr. Pickfield. Yes. Thank you. Yes, Counsel Maves?
Your worship, I'm just asking then, Ms. Gilberti, this gentleman's asking for a six weeks for a deferral.
No, we're not. If I could just comment about traffic study and the deferral. Study, Mr. Pickfield, is... If I'm mistaken, there is a detailed study that was dated April 2007, submitted to the Traffic Department, studied frontwards and backwards, sent to the region, asked for more comments. Mr. Delaurea from Delkan provided all those comments and was accepted by city staff. So there is no requirement or any further detailed traffic study at this time. With respect to the deferral, from what I understand, Mr. Pickfield's asking for a deferral so that his clients could obtain or retain the services of a planner to do a planning analysis. I respectfully suggest that that planning analysis has been done by your city staff. Why would any opponent pay to hire another planner to do the same work that the planning department has already done? They've already stated in their position that they oppose the application. What difference would it make whether a planner came back with a detailed analysis of the situation? They're opposed to the application. Most importantly, and I was trying not to bring this up, but there is a huge history of OMB appeals from Mr. Pickfield's clients with respect to the principles of my client. Three applications gone to the OMB, and there's no reason for this matter to be deferred so that they can just boost their argument now at the OMB. They have every right to preserve their right, appeal the matter if it's so proved at the OMB, and take it out there. With respect to the massing of the density issues and their development rights, we are prepared to suggest that they respect the same setback on their lands. We're not asking that they run below the difference between 25 meters and six meters. If we're only going to step back six meters, then why should they not be able to step back six meters? In fact, I suggest that most likely, they're going to be developing their lands for the southern parts so they can take advantage of whatever views of the falls that may exist, which are not obstructed by the Oakston or the Embassy Hotels. So with respect to the deferral, my client has no intention of agreeing to any deferral. And with respect to the parcel to the northwest, which has indicated as being the chalet site, that parcel is 57 feet wide by 135 feet deep. Truly, I can't believe that a hotel tower could possibly be put on that site. Those are my concerns.
Thank you. Any further questions, members of council? Counsel DiDaddi?
Just some comments. Your worship, first of all, seeing the design, I thought it's a beautiful-looking design. And I know beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and in my opinion, it's very nice. And I just want to go quickly through, if I could, your worship, the four objections quickly. First being the official plan perspective. You know, the region seems pretty much onside that this falls, it's acceptable with their perspective. The peer review, you know, sometimes I have a problem with peer review. I mean, you can never, ever get a bunch of people to agree on something. As a matter of fact, I've been told before, a camel is just a horse designed by committee. You know, often, things have to go through, and you get so many opinions, you end up with something that's nothing that anybody's happy with. Wind conditions, I'm comfortable with the RWDI study. I don't want to split hairs here. And the last thing is parking, off-site parking. I mean, in any prime real estate area, there's off-site valley parking. That's just the way it is. You go to any big city, any prime real estate area, that's the way it is. So I don't... I agree with the comment that, you know, postponing this, I don't see any purpose that that will serve other than to draw this out for six weeks. I don't see anything constructive coming out of that. I won't support that. If it's going to be appealed, it's going to be appealed. It'll be up to the OMB to make the final decision anyway. But as it sits here, I think it's not a bad idea. I had a couple of concerns, but I don't... I think it's a smart-looking project, and I think would fit nicely. Any other comments?
Any other members of council who can make comments before we call the... Or close the meeting, I should say.
I'll close the meeting and make questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else, other members of council with respect to this matter, who would like to have clarification of the proposed application? Having seen none, then, at this time, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Yes, Counsel Iannoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having listened to all the arguments and all the points back and forth, and going through the four concerns that Counsel DiDaddi just raised, might be most important, traffic. This council and the last council set a huge precedent in regards to off-site parking, and whether you liked it or didn't like it, it's now reality in Niagara Falls. The Dutton Atlantis Parking Lot, I think Counselor Wayne and I didn't miss a public meeting in people's houses in the Niagara College and in this room and in other community rooms to make sure that that parking lot was built so the residents were not a happy, and they are not. I'm glad to hear that there hasn't been any complaints in the last little while in regards to the valley parking back and forth. And the different concerns I looked at, you know, we're forever reading in the review, the henny-penny, the sky is falling, tourism is bottoming out, the business isn't coming. And we have a developer for us who wants to build a 30-story hotel and create 600 new jobs, and if I'm doing the math right, at $2,000 a group, taxes bringing in close to a million a year in taxes and zero cost of services, so any of the residents sitting at home thinking they'll be paying anything for this development, they will not. Development charges, permit fees, and taxes coming in, it's revenue for the city. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application before us.
Do the second motion. Counsel Fisher, I'd like to ask for recorded vote as well, members of council. So we'll call the roll. Yes, Counsel Wayne?
I just want to make some comments, and I may as well go on the record. Well, I'd like my comments first. I really have two minds about this one. And after listening to the arguments tonight, I'm a lot more comfortable than I was originally when I first read the report with the proposal. I am still not totally comfortable with the wind conditions and particularly the off-site impacts. I see that there's arguments that it can be... they can be addressed through coniferous trees and that, but I saw on the screen that there were a lot of places off-site where there's going to be impacts, and I don't see how a coniferous tree planted on site can really address that. I have seen people this summer at the top of the incline holding on to lampposts because of the wind conditions, so I've realized how bad the wind conditions in that entire Fallsview area can be, and, you know, affecting the public realm and other sites nearby. That's of a lot of concern to me. I think I have to be consistent. In the past, I voted against the Hilton because of too heavy a reliance on off-site parking, and, you know, you can only have so much traffic, so many people checking out around the same time before you get gridlock, and I'm concerned about that. You know, I don't have... I never supported the Hilton, was when they agreed to build on-site parking. But the thing that's of most concern to me, and I was the person who voted against, now I had numerous projects in this area because they didn't adhere to the old TADS guidelines. And of course, eventually, we realized, gee, we've got the wall, the TADS was put into place to avoid, and so now we have the Skyview Principle. And the thing that's the real puncher for me here is that this could set an undesirable precedent for future development. We don't want to depart from these guidelines like we did from the previous ones. We found what that did, and I can see a lot of positives here. It's just, you know, in the final analysis, that departing from guidelines setting undesirable precedents, I, you know, I just can't support this.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of council before the vote's called? Okay, Ms. Clerk?
The motion is to approve the application before council. Counselor DiDaddi?
In favor.
Counsel Fisher?
In favor.
Counsel Iannoni?
In favor.
Counsel Carrigan, in conference. Counsel Maves?
Forward.
Counsel Peter Angel?
Aye.
Counsel Thompson, in conference. Counsel Wayne?
Puff.
Mary Salsi?
Oppose.
Carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Members of council, we've gone to the next matter on the agenda. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next item, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to include the lands at 5956 Clark Avenue to the site-specific zoning of the property at 5950 Victoria Avenue. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 10th, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question, anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process if applicable shall leave their name on the sign and sheets outside the council chamber.
At this time, I'd like to ask the Director of Planning, Mr. Darverson, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darverson.
Perhaps you can use your favorite mic, please. It's on a little bit.
(laughing).
It's yours?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Next application is by Niagara, if you can hear me, by the Niagara 21st Group. It's a housekeeping amendment to provide for an expansion of current zoning for a high-rise building, addition of properties. The subject lands are shown here. The larger of the two parcels are already zoned for a high-rise building. There's an acquisition of the property on Clark Avenue that is to be incorporated. The applicant has requested zoning for lands known as 5950 Victoria Avenue and 5956 Clark Avenue. Council approved the zoning permitting a 30-story hotel in January 2005. Since that time, the applicant has granted various minor adjustments to height and specific location of the building. The applicant has subsequently acquired property on Clark Avenue and is requesting the zoning of the larger parcel extended over Clark Avenue. This is the full site plan, and it does show the addition of Clark Avenue property and additional provision of on-site parking. The property is overall designated official plan as part of the Fallsview sub-district. The Fallsview sub-district district is a primary location for large-scale accommodations, entertainment, retail, and cultural attractions. The official plan, design guidelines encourage hotels to provide adequate on-site parking, which is screened by landscaping. Acquisition of additional parking land has provided additional street presence along Clark Avenue. A proper bunker is required between the parking area and sidewalk to soften the impact of parking area and increase security. In terms of zoning, the property is zoned to its commercial, with certain specific provisions permitting a pent and 30-story hotel. Lands on Clark Avenue are currently zoned to its commercial. Requesting amendment is a housekeeping amendment to replace the property under one bylaw for development purposes. The amending bylaw includes minor arrangements, which are granted, the rest of the location of the 30-story hotel, including a provision for landscaping strip between the parking line and the street line. Landscape aligned on, designed along Clark Avenue and the Grand Boulevard is a residential facility. Section 37 benefits, all projects between four and 30 stories are reserved for street scape improvements. Letter of credit to secure the street scape costs would require the building from its stage. Section 37 agreement should be issued as required in passing of the zoning bylaw. It's our conclusion that the zoning amendment can be supported for the following reasons. Official plan encourages hotels to provide greater proportion of required parking on site. Additional maintenance of the hotel by enabling additional parking to provide, including driving on the site. Additional land will provide an opportunity for additional parking and landscaping as well, and will improve the aesthetic of the site on Clark Avenue. It's our recommendation that council approve the zoning amendment, the corporation of Clark Avenue property, and the passage of the amending bylaw for after execution of section 37.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darvison. Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is anyone here who wishes to speak to this proposed bylaw amendment? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this proposed bylaw amendment? Okay, having seen none, then council will now hear from the applicant or his representative.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Tommy Kevir, Dr. Parker, Nancy Pelosi, and Robert Parker, the principals here tonight. The applicant and I have reviewed the recommendations made in the staff report. While we definitely agree with recommendation number one, we disagree with part of recommendation number two. Firstly, the applicant is most anxious to have its site plan approved and site plan agreement registered. This will not be completed until the amending bylaw is approved by you and the section 37 agreement is executed. We kindly request that the bylaw and section 37 agreement be prepared and submitted to you for approval on September 24. With respect to the three-meter landscaping strip that's been referred to in the report, the applicant wishes to be relieved of the requirement to provide a three-meter landscaping strip along Clark Avenue as suggested in the staff report, as it was previously discussed with staff, and this type of request has been approved for other hotel developments. The applicant proposes to provide a decorative fence in lieu of landscaping, such as the one that's located along Stanley Avenue by the Sheridan Hotel. The applicant does, however, propose to provide the 3.05-meter roadway along Clark Avenue frontage at the site plan stage. With respect to the section 37 public benefits, as directed by approval of bylaw 2005-26, the applicant is most prepared to provide securities to pay for the street scape costs of the street frontages on Clark Avenue and Victoria Avenue, but not for saying along the proposed Grand Boulevard, because the said bylaw only requires the application to pay for saying if the former CP rail corridor is developed by the Corporation of the City of Niagara Falls. Therefore, it appears to be an onerous burden and contradictory to the existing bylaw to require the applicant to submit saying for a possible infinite period of time. The applicant also requests that staff provide proper formula and calculations as to how the sums of $66,312 and $55,945 were arrived at. Finally, with respect to the traffic study, there has been a request that the applicant provide a revised traffic study. The existing traffic study was formalized and approved with bylaw 2005-26, and there has been no significant change to the proposed hotel or the lands, saving except for the acquisition of additional lands. This obviously improves the area. Therefore, the applicant seeks approval of the existing traffic study without any further revisions. I have spoken with Mr. Julovic about that issue, and he concurred with that. Therefore, in conclusion, the applicant respectfully requests that you approve of the following: Recommendation number one, staff report. Relief of providing the proposed three-meter landscaping strip along the Clark Avenue frontage, provided that a decorative fence is placed there in lieu of saying. Recognition that it will not be required to place securities for the street scape improvements along the former CP rail corridor until the city develops saying as the proposed Grand Boulevard, which may never happen. Provide detailed formula and calculations as to the sums requested to be provided for the street scape improvements along Clark and Victoria avenues. And relief from being required to submit any further traffic studies or revisions to saying. And obviously, finally, that the amending bylaw and section 37 agreement be brought to you on September 24. Thank you.
Mr. Darvison, any comments with respect to the CP right-of-way and the matter with regard to the section 37 application?
Yes, the point is well-taken, Mr. Mayor. However, we do have official plan that addresses the Grand Boulevard as a public repair in the future. The point about its construction is well-taken. The only matter I could say on that would be, if you don't take this, some form of security, then the building will be built and will have no opportunity in the future to provide an opportunity or dedication. I would say that maybe there's some way to refund that security should the Grand Boulevard not proceed, but I think that we should take it and proceed on that basis. The other comment with respect to the other four?
That was, if you like, sure.
That's a long list of things to accommodate by staff. Certainly, there is provision about decorative fencing as opposed to that much landscaping, that certainly is possible. With respect to the timing of the proposal, bringing it back, such as those, our solicitor has to prepare the bylaws, the section 37 agreements, and so forth. If council's going to agree on all those lists of five items, maybe we could prepare a staff report to respond to one of those concerns, like each and every one of them is fairly significant, but I might try to apply to all of those matters.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, some members of, yes, Mr. Bird?
Mr. Mayor, the matter of the detailed calculations has been a matter of contention in previous section 37 agreements. On past experience, I'd be rather surprised if we were able to resort to produce anything that would satisfy Ms. Gilberti in two weeks. It's not me that actually prepares the numbers, but I just know from the last one I did, that it took us quite a while to satisfy the developer with our numbers.
Can you give us an indication of what time you think might be required?
I, it's not me whose staff would be committed to doing the numbers, so I wouldn't want to say, but I know when we did the Hilton, we were going flat out, and it took us a month.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions, members of council? Yes, Counselor Wayne?
With regards to the Grand Boulevard securities, I note in our report, it says the city has already obtained securities for street scape improvements along the future Grand Boulevard from other developers. If we were to forego them in this case, would it create an unfair situation where we've taken money from some and not from another?
Want to pose that question to somebody?
Yeah.
Who would you like to pose it to?
Whoever's most appropriate the answer.
Mr. McDonald?
Well, I mean, I think the answer is pretty obvious. I mean, we've said inconsistent practices in terms of doing that, and staff are recommending that we take the deposit and the credit to do that. I mean, maybe there's another form to do it, maybe a letter of credit even, in terms of that, that would be, so we're not tying up the cash in that regard. But we need some kind of a recognition that if that fact that street goes through, that the work will be done there, so.
Okay, Ms. Gilberti, you want to address that?
Existing bylaw doesn't require us at this time to provide securities for the street scape improvements against the Grand Boulevard, so it's almost, you're contradicting the previous bylaw that's already applicable to this property. All we're suggesting is that it be contained within the section 37 agreement, which is registered on title, which requires us to pay it. So the city isn't going to be at a loss. When and if the Boulevard is built, the development agreement, registered on title, will obligate the developer to pay it. If it's never built, there's no reason to put up funds for an infinite period of time.
Perhaps that's all the reason for a staff report, but Mr. Beeman, can you address that, just off the top of your head?
Well, the, certainly, money in hand, security in hand is always what the municipality wants. Any agreement that the municipality enters can always be done unsecured. You always can do that. It's always available to you. However, if you want to be secure, that you will in fact get the money, then you get security. Same with bank can lend you money and not ask for a mortgage, too. But they don't tend to do that very often. Having said that, there is, I hear Ms. Gilberti's concern about the unlimited time, and perhaps some kind of accommodation of a percentage of the amount to be put up as a security. In the meantime, we'd made similar accommodation with the Hilton, in terms of not putting the entire mass of its security up at once, or its payments up at once. And that's a possibility of a compromise along that line, given what I think is a fair consideration from Ms. Gilberti. The Grand Boulevard seems to be quite a ways off on the time horizon, and perhaps less money than the full amount could be tied up, and that might be a way of accommodating both, some kind of compromise.
Perhaps registration on title to that effect?
Well, we'll have the agreement registered on title in any event, Mr. Mayor, as far as the balance of the monies. So that's a possible compromise, should council find that acceptable.
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
I mean, it's, Your Worship, it's just awkward discussing this many issues, as Mr. Darvison mentioned, things, for instance, the Clark Street setback, and we're talking decorative fences, we've compromised in various, but I don't know if this is proposing absolutely no setback. Is it a decorative fence up to the sidewalk? I mean, we'd like to deal with that, and our staff typically would determine an appropriate setback, and we're very flexible in terms of how the landscape will be done. But, you know, I just don't know what the details are, and it's very difficult for staff to respond to these.
So I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, that's an issue that always discussed at the site plan stage. The only reason why we brought it up is because it was contained within the resooree staff report. If it hadn't been brought forward, we wouldn't have discussed it tonight at all. So because it was contained within the agreement, we had to respond to it. We're happy to discuss it at the site plan stage and figure it out at that point in time.
Mr. McDonald?
I mean, what the suggestion was is that there not be a setback. That's what I heard. Instead, we do a decorative fence, so I don't know what that means. And I appreciate the factor in site plan is when we get into the details of it, but it was brought up, and it was suggested there wouldn't be a setback. I'm not sure what that means.
I must clarify, Mr. McDonald, it's not an issue of a setback. There's a great setback between the road and the location of the building. We're talking about a landscaping strip, not a setback.
Your Worship, I didn't say exactly what it means, but going from that to a decorative fence, what does that mean?
Okay, I understand. Yeah, Sir Thompson?
Has this been used in other applications where they utilized a decorative fence rather than a landscape strip?
Your Worship, it's been a combination. There's a section of it could be landscape with a decorative fence, and we're saying there's various options, and I don't know what this means.
Can that not be worked out at the site plan?
Certainly, but not based on an agreement of council tonight to say that there wouldn't be a decorative strip and there would only be a decorative fence. And all I'm saying is I don't understand what it...
We could phase the motion to give you that opportunity to negotiate and discuss that at the site plan.
Well, exactly, and I think that's the point we're making in all the issues, that council may want a little more information to clarify several of the points, and it's just a bit awkward at this stage.
Appreciate the point. Okay, are there any further questions from council or persons present with respect to the clarification or the clarification of the proposed application? Anybody further? If not, then we'll declare the public meeting with respect to the proposed bylaw amendment to be concluded. Counselor Thompson?
I have been waiting for this to come on stream for a long time. I thought the 30-story hotel would be going ahead several years ago. Maybe part of the problem was because of the ISOR that existed on Clark Street, which should be commended, and I understand that it was extremely difficult to acquire this property because it was an absentee landlord in the southern states and was not really interested in selling it. And to go ahead with this project and have several dilapidated checks, there certainly wouldn't have given credit to the community, so I'm delighted that they cleared that off and acquired that property. And as a result, I think it's going to certainly enhance the property and give the opportunity for more landscaping and also more parking. So I would move the motion that we approve the application, that we give the opportunity to staff to deal with the option of landscape and the combination of landscape and setback at site plan, and that, you're telling me that our legal department can't work out some kind of legal agreement which would bind the applicant to make sure that they participate with the Grand Boulevard when that comes? I'm not as negative as others, but if that comes at some time, is there not, Mr. Beeman, an opportunity to legally tie that down with an agreement to make sure that they, the applicant, has an obligation to participate, depending when that comes on stream?
There is an obligation, but I could never recommend something like that without some form of security.
Well, then that's probably a good thing to recommend, some type of security.
Well, they're not opposed to signing the agreement, sir. They object to the security.
I'll leave that to the final negotiations, with my intent in this motion is to work out a suitable agreement with the applicant, who I'm sure will be receptive to what we're attempting to do here.
We have a second to that motion?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher, I'd like to have that motion read, please, for the benefit of the council. Everybody knows what they're voting on.
Well, I would, off the top of my head, articulate it that you're approving recommendation number one. That's the easy part. Everybody's in agreement on that. And I would articulate the second motion to be that staff work with the developer on the outstanding issues regarding section 37 agreement, security, street scape, or, sorry, landscaping versus decorative fence.
Okay. That the intent of the mover and seconder?
Mr. Alfredo?
Pardon, yes.
I don't think we want, I think I joined Ms. Gilberti in requesting that the street scape and so on not be connected with the section 37 agreement. That should be the site plan.
No, no, they're not.
Okay, good, okay.
Make that three points?
Yeah, they're three separate points.
Okay, members of council?
Maybe we have a recording book, yes, Counselor?
Recorded?
In favor.
Counselor Fisher?
In favor.
Counselor Iannone?
In favor.
Counselor Carrio?
In favor.
Counselor Maves?
In favor.
Counselor Peter Angel?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Wayne?
In favor.
Mayor Salsi?
In favor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you'd introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw for the recognition of an existing building as an apartment hotel slash hostel at 5741... at 5741 McGrail Avenue. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 10th, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Once again, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darvison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The property is located at 5741 McGrail Avenue, and the applicant is to oblige. The, this is the location of the subject property, just west side of McGrail, close to Bank Street. The proposed application involves an existing building, but it's an apartment building that is currently being used as a lion's house hostel. The applicant, the applicant is requesting that this building be recognized as only by law as an apartment hotel or hostel. Although the building was originally constructed as an apartment building, it is being used as a hostel with bedrooms or higher dwellings being rented out to individual individuals and groups of travelers, the only wishes to legalize the use prior to its sale. There are no complaints regarding use of this property. This is the site plan, and I can indicate to you that there will be no changes, additions, and so forth to the existing site. The property is designated for tourist commercial purposes. The use of the former apartment building as a hostel provides internal form of accommodation, tourist accommodation. It is a small-scale use, which does not have any impact on its surrounding neighborhood or surrounding infrastructure. The low-rise building fits in the scale of the adjacent, although the fact that the building is well, the use is compatible with the surrounding dwellings. As the use has similarity to multiple-family residential uses, the property has historically been used as an apartment building. There should be no land use impacts on adjacent dwellings and by the continuation of this use. The zoning is currently tourist commercial. The applicant is requesting that the hostel be added as a specific use. The traffic services, people are satisfied by parking spaces, and, I mean, she has many guests. It's just, provides an indication anyway that the level walking to the use that is available for, the use of public access to the site, should be no higher demand of parking on the site. It's our recommendation that the application be approved as a possible.
Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Interior Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. At this point, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, the council will now hear from the applicant or his representative?
Worship, members of council, it's nice to be here today. I'll be relatively short.
For the record?
Relatively short. My name is Brian Sinclair. To thank you for Joel Lance, who's sitting with me here, and a very nice-looking gentleman there. I just like to tell you what this thing really consists of. He actually, in doing his business, deals with seventeen countries, and his rates per night, twenty dollars a night to twenty-seven dollars a night, which is certainly very reasonable. What he really appeals to is students and graduate students from different countries in a common state for three or four days. Some of them take a whole apartment, some of them take rooms. It certainly provides something economical for students, because as we know, students usually haven't got any money when they get through university, especially today. The staff report is very good. I would point out to you that we had a tough time to do a definition of what we're doing, of what a hostel is. And I just would like to thank staff, especially Ken Meck, because he actually got the definition, which we agree with, which is on page three. The only thing that I would point out on this thing, this building, it's an eighteen year apartment building, there's no changes in the building. There's been fire upgrades to meet the fire department. There probably will be additional, perhaps additional. We have to apply for what we call a change of use, and in doing so, what the staff report is saying, this is the building department, is saying that we have to pay development charges. Development charges would be applicable. I would suggest that they're really not applicable in view of the fact that this building is staying exactly the same way. Still residential use, we're not changing the building, we're not putting a new building up, we're keeping all the rooms exactly the same. There's no real change. The, Mr. Murphy, through one of our consultants, the fire department, he checked with Mr. Murphy at the region, and he said that the development charge is applicable from the region's standpoint, it would be eighteen thousand dollars. However, Mr. Murphy indicated that there'd be a twenty-four thousand dollar credit to us because it's an apartment site. In other words, we would really get money back, or he won't give us any money back, we just wouldn't pay any development charges. But I would ask that Niagara Falls take a position that development charges aren't applicable in this particular instance, because we're not changing the building at all. He's really providing a great service at a very, very reasonable price, and it could be detrimental to my client, and he has to pay a lot of development charges, which I don't think are applicable in this case. I can see if we're doing a change in the building or changing something in, if we're not, it's going to be exactly the same as it is now. So I really appreciate your support, Mr. Lance, but...
Okay, thank you. Any comments from members of council or questions from members of council? Yes, Counsel Wayne.
I think I'd like staff to respond to the question of development charges and change of use.
Okay. Who would like to handle that? Mr. Darvison?
I could, there has been some correspondence coming back and forth of Mr. Sinclair and the building department. It really has nothing to do with the zoning application. I think the council can deal with the zoning application, and you might want a report from our building department regarding the applicability of these development charges. Mr. Sinclair makes a good point here. It's an existing building. There will be a change of use because the zoning is being changed. The whole question of application of development charges may be subject to a separate report. And it doesn't apply anyway until the applicant has requested a building permit or change of use permit. So if that's one way to handle it, get on with the zoning and deal with this development charges issue. There's nobody here from the building department really responding.
Okay. Mr. Beaman, you want to make comment?
Yeah, I would join Mr. Darvison in recommending to council that proceed with the zoning, and the development charges issue can be dealt with at a later time. I think Mr. Sinclair raises some interesting issues, and perhaps I could get together with Mr. Kaczerski and look through the bylaw on that particular issue. I'm particularly interested in what the region has to say, because it sounds like they're giving a, considering that these units existed at the time the bylaw was passed, and that's relevant to the issue of whether development charges are payable or not, whether or not a development permit is required or a change of use permit is required. So I would suggest that council not hold up the rezoning while the development charges are resolved, and we could, we'll, I, we'll deal with Mr. Sinclair, and we'll see if we can, we can resolve it to Mr. Sinclair's satisfaction, or at least explain why we think we need them.
Thank you. Mr. Sinclair, would that be satisfactory to you and your...
Mr. Beaman, quite correct. I'd support you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Yes, Counsel Maves?
I'd just like to leave your recommendation.
Yeah, let's just close the meeting first. I appreciate that, I'll get you in a minute. Are there any other questions from persons present or members of council? Having seen none, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Counsel Maves?
I'm in the recognition that the council...
Seconded by Counsel Thompson. Any further discussion? Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Worship, did I include the report coming back about the development charges?
Yes, I like that.
Okay. Is it operated and Counsel Maves? And Counsel Thompson? Fine. Any further discussion? Call the vote, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Sinclair. Mr. Clerk, did you introduce the next item, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to recognize an existing triplex at 5997 Drummond Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 10th, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you. Once again, we'll ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darvison?
Yes. This is probably 5997 Drummond Road, the applicant, Robert Oliver. This is a corner lot located on Drummond Road and First Street. The proposed application is to change the current zoning, which is a residential mixed apartment zone, or a multiple, it's a transitional zone, and to change it into a residential mixed apartment zone. And the purpose here is to recognize sites specifically, this specific triplex, while it is. Since the site plan, no changes are being promoted in the current configuration of the property. The property is designated for residential purposes. I'm going to be very brief on this one. It's a very simple application. The proposed location of the use, being a multi-family use, conforms to the official plan. We have a number of density criteria that needs to be satisfied. It all satisfies the person's technical requirement. With respect to zoning, the zoning is transitional residential multi-family, that's a holding-type zone. It awaits applications such as to site specifically zone it for a specific multi-family use. That is exactly the application's saving. There are some minor site adjustments to lot area, lot front depth, simply to recognize existing building, configuration of property, those matters can be incorporated into the zoning bylaw. Just to point out, historically, basement apartments have not been permitted, but changes to the recent fire code and material building code now allows units to be located in basements, and they have regulations for that. So there isn't a basement unit here, we'll incorporate that. It's our conclusion that existing triplex, triplex, provides the official plan, and the zoning bylaw amendment is appropriate to recognize this as a use. It's our recommendation that the application be supported.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darvison. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Interior Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Please come forward, and welcome, in your name for the record, please.
Name, would you like to board?
Welcome.
I just have a comment in here, that, because it was saying that it's an existing triplex. Actually, it was not an existing triplex. It was just converted recently, within the last two years, and they were doing the construction at that time. So that was only my comment on that. It was not an existing, but now it has been made up like that. So other than that, I have no problem.
We'll have the applicant clarify that for you, Mr. Board. Thank you. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Okay, having seen none, at this time, we'll hear from the applicant or his representative?
Good evening, Your Worship, Chris Costelli and Associates are representing Bill Slovak, and threw him to Mr. Oliver, council members and members of staff. When, when the purchase was made on the property, it was purchased, Mr. Slovak informed me that it was purchased as a triplex. There was an apartment in the basement. This was done recently. And further to that, we have reviewed the application, or the report to council, and we agree with the conditions that were stated in there, and that if any other, if you have any other comments or questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, members of council. Any further questions of Mr. Costelli? I guess not, we're all set. Thank you. There's no further comments or questions by members of council or those present, I'm going to conclude the meeting and ask for motion. Yes, Counsel Thompson?
Yes, I did a little investigation into this matter, and in fact, the comments of the gentleman are probably accurate, that it was not initially or originally a triplex, it was a duplex. However, it has been, it was converted before the sale of the property, so if you were going to be, punish anybody for installing an apartment in there illegally, it's the previous owner, and what they are trying to do now is to rectify an existing situation. So I have no problem in moving the approval of the application as a triplex, as the, Mr. Oliver and others who were involved in the project purchased it in good faith previously, and it's already been converted to a triplex. I would make that motion.
Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Maves? Okay, any other comments? Having seen none, we'll call the vote, all those...
This is a very simple matter as well. We have a property located at 5532 Drummond Road, and the applicant wishes to add a day nursery to the existing use of that property. The property is a small neighborhood commercial facility, located on this side of Drummond Road, in the south end of State North Street. The applicant is to establish a day nursery in the existing neighborhood building. The applicant is requesting a day nursery common, a couple of grandchildren. The applicant is listed for that use. No changes required to the existing site plan. Quickly, the property is designated a residential neighborhood commercial facility, occupied in residential areas. This property's been zoned for neighborhood purposes since 1979. A range of uses permitted here are neighborhood, could be neighborhood serving, in addition to a day nursery, which typically a neighborhood for use. Day nursery is happening, whether elsewhere in the community, by the same. Again, current zoning is neighborhood commercial. The day nursery is a small-scale use. The bylaw should recognize some adjustments to the front yard, rear, and side yard setbacks to apply to the existing building. There are sufficient number of parking spaces. Four are required, there's actually four provided on the property, and there's still available parking, opportunities to rent a parking on the north of the building. It's our recommendation that the application is suitable, and it should be supported by council.
Thank you very much. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to meet, or sorry, to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Interior Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? And for a third time, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, then, council will now hear from the applicant or his representative, or her representative, I should say. Welcome, your name, please.
My name's Reverend Miller. I'm the owner and operator of Little and Angels Home Daycare, and I hope to get approval for this zoning amendment, so I can proceed with my application for the day nursery.
Take a little over, please.
Okay, I'll start over. I'm just hoping to get approval tonight, hopefully, so that I can proceed with the...
Any other comments you wish to make?
No.
Okay. Are there any questions of Ms. Miller? No? Thank you very much, then. Okay, thank you. There's no further comments from members of council or those present, I'm going to ask the meeting be concluded, and ask for the pleasure of council. Counsel Carrio?
What are your recommendations, Worship?
Sorry, Counsel Fisher, seconded, okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried, you didn't ask me. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Clerk? Next item, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to prevent a proposed retail store at 6565 and 6585 Lundy's Lane. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 17th, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And once again, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darbison.
And, Mr. Council, this is the last public meeting for this evening, and we have a couple of properties on Lundys Lane proposing comprehensive zoning bylaw amendment. We introduce one large development on two commercial properties. These are the two commercial properties, there are only one properties, most of the properties are essentially zoned for commercial purposes. One property on Bing Avenue has a residential zoning to it, it needs to be changed. The applicant is proposing a retail store on the two properties, and site-specific general commercial zone is being applied for the entire property. This is the site plan, it's a consolidation of properties, the building with the setback, with ample parking located throughout the property area. The property is designated for tourist commercial purposes. New developments should contribute to the traffic, streetscaping, vibrant buildings, bringing the buildings closer to the street, providing consistent landscape setbacks, and minimizing the number of access driveways. We feel the proposal applies to the official plan, as the scale is consistent with other similar uses in the Lundys Lane district. The proposal consolidates two existing accesses onto Lundys Lane into one. The design minimizes traffic impacts on Bing Avenue residences. The driveway onto Bing Avenue is being located as close as possible to Lundys Lane. The proposed development is consistent with the front here, rear, front yard setbacks of other similar-scale retail projects on Lundys Lane, and the proposal does provide extensive landscaping along Lundys Lane to buffer a large parking area. The zoning is essentially general commercial now, a small portion of one of the properties is zoned residential that needs to be changed, and we feel consolidated zoning has merit, as it enables provisions to be included in the zoning bylaw, to control the number and location of access points onto Bing Avenue, to ensure impact on residences are minimized. The consolidation of the zoning bylaw also secures landscaping to enhance the appearance of the property, buffer adjacent streets and properties. The property would be subject to site plan control as well. It's our conclusion that the amendment should be supported. If we place the whole of properties under one specific zone, we'll secure landscaping and more controlled and conditional accesses onto Bing Avenue. It's our recommendation that the application be supported.
Thank you. Mr. Darbison, just to qualify, you just bring that picture back, I understand the photo only shows one property, we're also talking to the, one property to the west further as well, is that correct? The motel?
Yes, on the Accra two-some.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Interior Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. The people present, yes, please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Dave Durrell. I live on Glentown Avenue, which is, I guess you can't really see it to the... We have some concerns. We do not oppose this, it actually made it look nice. The property is kind of dingy right now, it's not exactly desirable location, I guess you could say, for what they have on there. We have some concerns with the actual retail place. They've got a loading dock, the loading dock would actually be right behind, I live on Glentown, my four houses up, there's, I've got, my neighbor's the third house, he's here with me, Gary. The loading dock's right behind our house, there's no buffer between the house and the loading dock, so we're concerned. We have ideas what this is going to be, we're not too sure, but with the loading dock, we're concerned on times when the things get loaded, basically hours of operation of the business, stuff like that, basically. We're hoping that this could sort of be reversed, the retail, the loading dock be on Bing's side. There's a bit of a distance between, like I say, Bing Avenue and the houses that are there, so perhaps it would be a better buffer, you know what I mean? It's hard to explain.
No, we understand the same, thank you. Okay, is there anything else?
That's basically it, other than traffic hours of operation, like what, how much is going to go in and out? We just faced a little worry about...
Try to get your questions answered from the...
Like I said, we don't oppose it, it's a good opportunity, change the land.
Thank you. Anybody else present who wishes to make comment? Yes, please come forward. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Gary Kenyers. I live at 5819 Glentown.
You're listening, Gary?
Kenyers. I just have the same concerns as Dave, we're neighbors, so it's the exact same concern. Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, please come forward, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Roberta Scott, and I live on Bing Avenue, and I have made a written submission, I just didn't know whether I, you would like me to read it?
Please.
Of my...
Please.
I'll just get to our concerns. We're concerned what the retail store will be and the hours of operation. I live right across the street on Bing Avenue, and I wrote a letter with my neighbor Christine Another concern is the necessity of the proposed driveway into the parking lot from Bing Avenue, and the subsequent increased traffic on our residential street. We're concerned about the landscaping plans for the side of the building that will face Bing Avenue. We would like to see the city tree stay, which would be approximately at the northwest corner of the building on Bing Avenue. We're concerned about the brightness of the parking lot lighting, and we'd like to know when construction will begin, and how it will affect our properties that are directly across the road.
Okay, so, give us a break. Thank you. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak?
Just want to add lighting concerns as well, for the property.
All right, we'll get that. Okay, Mr. Cowan? No, okay. No one else, then, we'll ask the applicant to come forward.
Thank you, your worship, members of our council. My name is Greg Priamo, I'm with the planning firm of Zelenka Priamo Limited. We act on behalf of Real Capital Partners in this project. We've reviewed the planning staff report, and we've worked closely with planning staff, and as such, we're supportive of the recommendations and the content of the report. Speaking directly to the concerns raised by the neighbors, it's alluded to in the report, and of course, at this point in the development process, there's never any guarantees, but my client is negotiating with a national pharmacy to locate on this, on this site, and we're reasonably certain, if we're successful in this process, that they will be the occupants of the building. They, their stores, depending on a final determination, operate either till nine o'clock or till midnight. As most pharmacies do now, they, it's one of the two. With respect to the lighting, we will have to comply with the city's requirements to light our property sufficiently, without having any lights, any of the lighting from our property flood onto adjoining properties. So, all parking lot building light, lighting will have to be designed to not offend our neighbors. We spent some time tonight at the site, and again, the tree that the one neighbor spoke of is actually, it's a very large tree, and I could see why they would want it to be maintained, and it's clear to us that the tree is on city property, it's on the city boulevard, well off our, from our property line. And so, to that extent, I don't see any reason why the development of our property would include the removal of that tree. With respect to the loading dock, again, given the nature of the, of the use, there's not a continuous loading facility, they would get deliveries weekly, certainly no deliveries after the store's closed, it's not a 24-hour operation, there are not staff there to take deliveries overnight like in grocery stores and like that. With respect to buffering, we've already had discussions with staff about the introduction of new fencing along that entire property line, that fencing would be sized and located to act as a, as a, as a buffer. And then, in front of the fencing, as you can see in the concept plan, we'd introduce landscaping, normally referred to as high canopy landscaping, so these would be plants that would grow up above the top of the fence and further act as a buffer. Keeping in mind, too, that these properties are already, particularly the ones about Ingleham, are already designated and zoned for commercial purposes. We, working with staff, we agreed to include those lands, because staff wanted to incorporate into the bylaw plan to both properties, specific landscape requirements that we did not oppose. And that, those include the pining strips around the perimeter of the property, and the introduction of a higher level of landscaping along Lundys Lane and Bing. And we've, we've committed to do that, to the extent that we've agreed special provisions will be introduced into the bylaw to ensure that. Of course, with a retail store of this size, and the fact that it will, in all likelihood be a pharmacy, it's really playing two roles. It will benefit from the traffic traveling on Lundys Lane, but this is the type of retail store that's in a certain community as well. And so, the access off Bing is important, as, from an operational standpoint, as it is for access to our customers. And we've been careful, again, working with staff, to try to bring that access as close to Lundys Lane as possible, and right now, we have it opposite the existing commercial driveway across the street. And so, we're hopeful, together with good architecture and the application of landscaping, that we can minimize impact, but also still provide access to the community to this particular I think those were the concerns, if there's any I missed, I'd be happy to...
Just the one with the dock, and I can understand your concern, but you might want to address the dock issue, reversing the dock. The problem you might have?
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to enter it, there wouldn't be sufficient room in the backs of the property to marshal the trucks to get into the loading dock. It's, you know, it's a fairly narrow site, so it limits our design capabilities. But again, these are daytime deliveries, we will be doing extensive fencing and landscaping, and the most, if you, I don't know, there, was there an earlier site plan that showed the truck turning movements?
Not on this one.
Not, not on the, okay. We, we have one that we gave to staff, but most of the marshaling into that loading dock, there it is there, happens in front, right in the parking lot, as opposed to the side of the building. So, the trucks actually come in, they go toward Bing, and then back into the loading dock, and then straight back out to Lundys Lane. So, the, to the extent that they're in the back of the property, it's very limited, we do have a garbage enclosure at the back, but again, that's a much smaller truck, and the delivery occurrences there are even fewer than the main loading dock.
Okay, thank you. Was there a question, sir?
Yes.
If you're talking about the fencing, do we take down or discontinue fences?
Yes.
With what?
With wood privacy fence.
Okay. My fault, my concern with them, thank you. Good, thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Any other questions from members of council? No? And those present? Okay, fine. We'll ask that the meeting of regard then to the rezoning application be closed, and the pleasure of council. Move the recommendation, Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor DiDadi. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, miscellaneous planning matters. I'd like to call on our Director of Planning, Mr. Darbison, with respect to this next matter. Mr. Darbison? Would you be kind enough to address the next matter, please?
He's taking a break.
Miscellaneous planning matters, we have an issue before us with regard to an application and a determination with respect to, what's minor?
Just a quick overview, fair enough, council. This particular zoning bylaw was subject to considerable council debate. The project was larger, council considered this originally, and as a result of several neighborhood meetings and council direction, a zoning bylaw was finally passed, and that bylaw provided for 35% or less density than what had been proposed today, building height that would be 10 feet shorter, and rather than a five-story building, two, two or three-story buildings. And when this matter went to the committee of adjustment for a change, we need to assess it on the basis of, is the, is the change minor, because it meets the purpose and intent of the official plan, the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. And in our view, having, when council considered this matter, made a number of reductions to building height, sure that it fit in, we didn't think that the application before the committee was actually a reflection of the purpose and intent of the bylaw that you had originally passed. Therefore, we, we want your direction, whether or not to proceed with an appeal of the decision of committee of adjustment, or if you're happy with the application and committee's disposition of this matter, and that we would not continue with appeal. So, that's essentially the background of this report.
Okay, that's Counselor Wing.
I would hope that we continue with the appeal. I remember when this was first before council, and the area residents were vehemently opposed to the application, because they, the people on Churchill are in one-story dwellings, they're little wartime houses, and they didn't want three-story apartments looming in their backyards. They were certainly not going to want a big five-story building of this kind of density looming in their backyard. And I agree, this is not a minor change, and it's not a desirable or appropriate development for the area, and I think staff was right to appeal the committee of adjustments decision, and I absolutely think that we should support them on this and continue with it.
So, we do have Representative the applicant here, does council wish to hear from the representative? Yes, Counselor Thompson?
Well, yeah, this has been going on for a long time, and you can see all of the people here who were in opposition to the, the application. This initially was three buildings, which certainly impacted on the, on the residential properties, and I understand that there was considerable dialogue, discussion, and compromise, and moved the building right to the back, and made the changes, the increase in the number of dwellings and number of stories, and apparently, the residential surrounding area was very pleased with the changes, and didn't have any problem, and obviously, there was no objection or appeals by anybody else, was it, Mr. Darbison?
There are minor standing with, there's some concerns, but no...
No appeals to it at all?
No.
And the appeal date has passed?
Yes.
So, you know, I think that tells a huge story, but Counselor Peter Angelo is on the committee, and maybe he'll bring us up to date.
Yes, we have the clerk who'd like to make a comment, and Counselor Peter Angelo.
Just through the chair, I just want to clear that this planning report was not advertised publicly, although indeed, through the committee of adjustment, there is a notification to the public.
Counselor Peter Angelo.
Perhaps I can clarify some things, I mean, being myself, and actually voting on this application, and I know Mr. Gray wishes to speak on this issue as well, and I think council would have a different hearing, just to address Counselor Wing's comments, actually, about the residents being so vehemently opposed to the application. I think if you were at the meeting, you would note that they were quite opposed to the approval that council previously gave, which was the two-three-story buildings. And the two-three-story buildings allowed, one of the buildings could be built only 40 feet away from the property line, and what the application that's in front of here now says, and you know, your worship, it's a shame, actually, that, that council didn't get the actual application. All they get is a report asking them if they want to continue with the appeal. I mean, I would expect a lot of councillors around the table to stand up and say, what appeal? I have no idea what you're talking about. I've never seen the application, how do I know when to voting on it? I mean, unless you were here before, and unless you have knowledge of the application or the committee of adjustment, how can you even vote on this report? Nonetheless, going back to the residents, the residents were quite pleased that the applicant was going to delete the building that was supposed to the property line, and move the actual structure as far as that he could away from the property line, which I believe Mr. Gray can factor from, is approximately 200 feet away. The actual building height is only increasing by less than 10 feet. So, to say that this is a major variance, I guess in the committee's opinion, your worship, it wasn't. It was keeping within the neighborhood. We felt that there were high-rise apartments down the street at the corner of Dungeon Development, there's a few of them there. So, your worship, I mean, I'd like to hear from Mr. Gray as well, perhaps he can explain it, perhaps he can explain it better. The bottom line was that the residents were very accepting of the change of the application as an option, and that's why it was supported, your worship.
Thank you, counsel, I appreciate your clarification. I have requests from Councilonie, may I comment?
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask something about the process. Committee of adjustment passed this, was there a request by a neighbor, or an appeal by a neighbor, or a resident, asking for it to come to council for us to overturn it? Because in the time I've been here, I think I can only remember one other committee of adjustment application or decision, and I was on committee of adjustment, so that tells me how many terms ago that was, because I only did half a term on that one, and it was then that one was... And it was then that one was appealed to us because a resident asked for it to be. But when does staff start appealing a committee's decision and then bring it to council to override an appointed committee's decision?
Let's get a question, a guess your question is...
This doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, let's see. Mr. Darbison, could you answer councillor's question, please?
Yes. It's not really the planning practice to watch appeals. Actually, this is the first one in many years. The reason that we did that was, A, the council meeting was canceled for us to bring a report to you and for you to make a decision. So we had to do something. Given the council's direction when the original bylaw was passed, this minor, my various applications did not meet the purpose and intent of the official plan that you originally approved for this project. Our job is simply to advise you that, or and the committee, for example, that is the application a minor variance? Does it meet the purpose and intent of the official plan? Does it meet the purpose and intent of the bylaw that you passed? Our job was done by indicating to the committee that we didn't think it met those tests, and therefore, we advised the committee accordingly. We brought this matter to council because the council meeting date was canceled. There wasn't enough time for us to bring the report in sooner. We had to file an appeal with committee secretary. That appeal could simply be dropped if your direction is to do that. But we had to protect council's interest in this matter, and we believe that we did that.
Thank you. Councillor Anoni.
I would say the job to protect councillor's interest is our council appointment on committee of adjustment. And I'm confused then, how does an application get to committee of adjustment? Doesn't staff vet it through and decide whether it's a minor variance before or after the committee of adjustment, as opposed to after committee of adjustment has already voted on it? And then comes before council? I'm confused, is there not checks and balance before it even gets to C of A? If you didn't think it belonged in C of A, whose job was it to say, don't put it there, bring it to council? Because I have no clue what took place in committee of adjustment. So we have staff opposing a council-appointed committee's decision. This is, I think this is bizarre. So who vetted it through to committee of adjustment? If our head of planning didn't think it belonged there, what was it doing in committee of adjustment?
We'll ask our director that. Mr. Darbison?
Thank you. You're absolutely right. Our advice to the applicant, Brady, was that it was not committee of adjustment matter. It shouldn't have belonged there. We were encouraging him to submit a reapplication to council, that you could deal with this matter, because you were the decision makers at the outset. Therefore, exactly what you said, our advice to Mr. Brady was, no, it should not be here. Mr. Brady decided that he has the right to set up an application, which he does, and we cannot stop him. Therefore, that's why the application was done with the committee.
Councillor Anoni.
Was staff's recommendation at the committee denied?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
This time, I think we should hear from Mr. Brady. Mr. Brady, do you come forward, please?
Make a motion.
Oh yeah, a motion, sorry, a motion to approve Mr. Brady's presentation. Councillor Thompson, councillor Peter Angelo, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Brady.
I'll be very grateful if you had a long evening. We all have. Mayor Solskine, council, this matter was well-vetted at your committee of adjustment. There was a lot of discussion with the neighbors. In fact, there was a petition that was provided to the committee of adjustment on behalf of the neighbors that said, please do this. We didn't want what was approved by council. In fact, what happened in front of council was that a compromise was made, and the compromise, the developer didn't really like it, and neighbors really didn't like it. And so my client went out and about to try to find someone who would build the building, and when they looked at it, they said, well, no, a building in that way really doesn't make any sense. So we went back to the neighbors, we talked to the neighbors, we spent a lot of time with the neighbors, and came up with a compromise that both sides thought was good. Both the developer thought was good and the neighbors thought was good. Now, to be fair, and to be completely honest, there were a couple of neighbors who came to the committee, and they had a couple of other issues that they raised. And they, and that was fine. And councillor Peter Angelo can, can take me to task on this, but nonetheless, I proposed four conditions at the committee, and those four conditions were to address the issues that were raised by the residual neighbors at the time. And those conditions, one has to do with the site plan approval, the others were the invitation to, to property owners to be involved with the site plan approval process. But the last two were the ones that the neighbors really wanted, and that was that this building will be registered as a condominium. And therefore, the neighbors felt a lot more comfort in the fact that it would be registered as a condominium, and that's a condition of approval. And the other is that an eight-foot-high acoustical wood fence would be constructed along the southern property line prior to any construction, that's prior to any construction of the actual building itself. And so what we agreed to is that before the building would be built, the buffer would go in. The residual neighbors said, that's great, that's what we wanted, it was put in place, and then there was a vote at the time, and it moved forward. I suggest to you that based on the report that staff actually wrote to the Ontario Municipal Board, which hasn't gone to the board, it's sitting in the offices here, but the actual comments to the board, if we had come back in with a, with a rezoning and an official plan amendment, as has been suggested, I don't think staff would have, would have supported it at all. In fact, they're suggesting that a height of five stories and a density of 86 per hectare, the proposed apartment is well above the city's residential policies, which guide the consideration of apartments in the site, and it goes on. What we're facing is that we worked out a discussion with the neighbors to deal with the issues, and the neighbors are happy. They were happy at the time of the meeting, and that is what we thought was the appropriate way to move forward. We submitted a committee of adjustment application, we addressed the final issues at the committee of adjustment. The committee said, you know what, we went to the site. We actually went to the site, we looked at it, and what you're making, what you're saying makes sense. Because, in fact, there are bigger apartment buildings than this, that are even more dense than what you're talking about in the site, within two blocks of this area. Victoria Park Towers was one, and Camelot Towers are the others. Thank you.
Yes, councillor Anoni.
Have you prepared anything?
Yeah, me too, your worship. Thank you.
Yeah, you know what, I, I'd like to move that council not continue with its appeal to the committee of adjustments' decision.
And I'm going to tell you something, this application, this report for council is not complete. Nobody told us the residents were there in favor. Nobody told us you handed an appeal saying we're, petition saying we're in favor. This is incomplete information to council, and I think this is not fair to us.
Thank you. We have a motion by councillor Anoni, a second by councillor Kerrio. Yes councillor Peter Angelo.
Your worship, the only other part that I wanted to reinforce that, that I don't like about this report is that the application isn't even here. The application that shows all of the people that are going to decide on whether or not to continue with the appeal, doesn't even have the original submission that shows them what the applicant is trying to do. That's entirely not fair, your worship. And in the future, if this happens again, perhaps the application can be included so that council can have the benefit of at least understanding what the appeal is for.
Yes, could I advise, a good point? Yes, Mr. Darbison?
Okay, and I can take responsibility for that. This report and the number of attachments was very significant, there was many minutes, there was the original report on staff. It was a, apparently a long report, very long length report. I made that decision, not just apply that information in hindsight, but I think what we did tonight was a full disclosure of the information, Mr. Brady certainly is here to give the other side of the story. We're simply here to advise council that we took this action, if you want to continue with the appeal, do so, but I think we've been convinced otherwise, and that's certainly my purpose in this report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darbison. We do have a motion on the floor, members of council. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's, sorry, opposed? One opposed? Thank you, the motion's carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Brady. Members of council, I'd like to begin my comments this evening by offering condolences to the family of Alfiero Visca. Alfiero was a retired employee of the city of Niagara Falls. We offer the thoughts and sincere sympathy of members of council and city staff to the family as they mourn the loss of their loved one. Moving on to other council business, it was wonderful news to hear last Wednesday that the federal investment in the Niagara Civic and Convention Center is forthcoming. While I wasn't privy to as to which members of council were asked to attend, I was pleased to acknowledge that a number of councils were in fact present. I would like to thank MP Rob Nicholson for working hard on Parliament Hill to get this commitment for Niagara Falls. The federal investment will go, will join the money already in the bank from the provincial government and the contributions made by area business owners in Fallsview and Victoria Center. On behalf of the members of council, I'd like to thank Mr. Nicholson, along with various levels of government and members of the business community in our city for their support of this worthwhile project. This project is sincerely a collaborative effort, as supported by previous councils, and I have been pleased to work with some key individuals, Mr. Dragun Matic and Mr. Ed Lustig, who have been integral in the, making this project a reality. As well, city staff should be acknowledged for their work to secure the convention center here in Niagara Falls. Thank you to all who have made commitments and all involved. This is a significant investment in the future of our community. The Niagara Civic and Convention Center will increase potential visitors year-round to help eliminate the job seasonality that many Niagara Falls residents face each year. It will encourage and support year-round employment and a stronger job market in our city, and most importantly, this will mean that families will be able to rely on more consistent jobs throughout the entire year in Niagara Falls. The announcement of federal funding is the final piece of the puzzle to have the convention center built here in our city, and we still have much work to do, however, to ensure the long-term sustainability of our convention center. An update on the Niagara Tunnel project, I would like to advise our area residents of the upcoming blasting tunnel, a blasting that will take place, I should say, due to work in the Niagara Tunnel project. The Ontario Power Generation has contacted us to inform that the second phase of blasting of bedrock that is required at the intake to the tunnel will commence, blasting will begin in mid-September and will continue through the summer of 2008. It is anticipated that up to three blasts will occur per day, Monday through Friday, between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., and we are ensured that blasting will be regulated, monitored, to ensure there will be no impacts on neighboring residents or businesses. Warning sirens will be heard prior to the blasting, and concerns or questions can be directed to the Ontario Power Generation. This is with regard to the development in the southern part of our city, very close to the Niagara Parkway. I'd like to bring some events of note to the attention of residents and members of council. On Wednesday, the United Way campaign lunch series kicked off at the Sheridan Fallsview Hotel. Over the course of coming months, there are other, other area businesses will be hosting these lunches to garner much-needed community support for this year's United Way campaign, and I encourage our residents to participate and join us in these lunches. Our firefighters in Niagara Falls were honored at a long service reception last Thursday, September 6th. Special recognition was paid to firefighters who have served for 20, 25, 30, and 35 years. It was a pleasure to attend and congratulate our city firefighters for their dedication on behalf of residents and members of council. I would like to draw your attention to the stunning painting behind me here. This is the winning painting in this year's Plain Air Awards held last Saturday. The Plain Air Awards competition sees artists from all over the continent competing in a paintout in Queen Victoria Park. This year's painting by Lawrence Rudelec of Hanover, Indiana, will be displayed in City Hall in our committee room one, along with the winning paintings from the previous three years. Thank you again to Jaclyn Baldini for her efforts in organizing another successful event. I'd like to bring up some upcoming events to the attention as well of members of the community and council. There will be a grand opening of the park at the McBain Center this Saturday, September 15th, from 10:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon. Phase one of the park will then be open for children to play in. It is a fully accessible, state-of-the-art park, and I look forward to greeting neighbors along with fellow members of council at this public community event on Saturday. The Terry Fox Run is taking place this Saturday, September 16th. I would like to thank councillors Jim Diodati and Victor Peter Angelo, along with Michael DiCienzo, for their efforts to raise funds by shaving their heads this evening before our council meeting. You've helped to get the community involved and have garnered big support, including many substantial contributions. Online pledges as well can be made in support of Jim and Victor and Mike and the Terry Fox Run through a link on the city of Niagara Falls website homepage. The grand opening as well of the Coronation Center Craft House Cafe is coming up this weekend. The public is invited to visit the Coronation Center for an open house and celebrations on Sunday, September 16th, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. The official heritage designation of the Oswald House on St. Paul Avenue will take place Tuesday, September 18th. This is another example of the efforts of the Municipal Heritage Committee. We look forward to that special day in our community. And this year marks the 100th anniversary of hospital care in Niagara. And on Sunday, September 23rd, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., the Niagara Health System will be hosting a celebration at the Greater Niagara General Hospital to pay tribute to this milestone year for health care in Niagara. Congratulations to the Niagara Health System. I look forward to celebrating with residents and healthcare workers. And again, our turn to pray kicks off at Mountain Park Church on Mountain Road on Sunday, September 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. Thanks again to Reverend Martin Good for his presentation this evening. We look forward to participating in the week of prayer for the city of Niagara Falls. Thank you for your attention. Clerk? Number of items on communications and comments of the city clerk. The first item is a request that October be proclaimed as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. You have a motion of councillor Kerrio, seconded by councillor Maves. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried, thank you. Second item is Brian Jones requesting that the municipality participate in a National Flag Day on February 15th.
Uh-huh.
Moved by councillor Anoni, seconded by councillor Fisher. Yeah, pardon, sorry?
What they want us to do?
Well, yes, they want us to proclaim this, or participate, I should say, participate, exactly. Now, this is maybe in conflict with what the provincial government is talking about. Mr. Clerk, do you want to address that, please?
Yeah, this gentleman feels that February 15th should be declared a holiday, as the background information that I'm sure you read thoroughly indicates. It's really up to the province to make that determination through labor legislation. Obviously, this is a bit of an issue right now, though. Mr. McGinty has made a promise that there will be a holiday in February, so that's hot on the campaign trail. I guess my suggestion would be that you possibly endorse a holiday in February, because all of city workers want another day off, and that that holiday possibly be called National Flag Day.
That the pleasure, yes, you may have a conflict. Councillor Anoni?
I'd move we go on with my...
Support the concept, councillor?
Yeah.
Okay, seconded by councillor Kerrio? Is that correct? Okay, all those in favor? Motion's approved, thank you. Next item is Ontario 911 Advisory Board requesting financial assistance of $100 and related resolution. Pleasure of council?
I'm in a bunch.
Pleasure of council? Moved by councillor Anoni, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried, thank you. Number four item, Niagara Ice Dogs requesting city to purchase a municipal advertising package for $4,000 for the upcoming hockey season. Pleasure of council?
Yeah.
Councillor Thompson?
Well, when I initially saw that, I had to go back to the debate we had with respect to the junior A hockey and some emotions that we all must have had at that time about losing the Ice Dogs, or losing a junior A team. There's been several of us around the council table who have been, being kept apprised of the possibility of a, at least a 5,000-seating arena by a private enterprise in the future. Whether it materializes or not, I don't know, but the Ice Dogs have a five-year contract. And I don't see the city of St. Catharines, after they just finished building a four-pad arena, putting up a 5,000 or plus arena. If the private sector people come on-stream, as they very well could be in the next three to five years, we could be certainly a prime area for a junior A team with a private, privately-funded arena, which is maybe high in the sky, but we never know when it possibly could happen. With that thinking, I finally said to myself, you know, we're all in this together. I remember when, what's his name, the Maple Leafs?
Errol Ballard.
Errol Ballard, my best friend, moved the junior A team to St. Catharines after pretending to negotiate with us for a little while. I went up and dropped the puck at the opening of the St. Catharines junior team with Mayor Adams at the time, just to show that there was uniformity and, and we were united in having a junior A team here. So I kind of liked the idea. So I kind of liked the idea that we're at least participating and supporting, and I'd like to hear somebody else's comments before I make a motion.
Any comments from any members of council? Yes, Councillor Carrio?
For your worship, if Councillor Thompson is going to suggest that we buy a, I mean, set a lot of types of packages for the $2,000 to $4,000, if we were going to do that, or if we're going to invest any money? I would rather say I should invest more and buy some tickets and maybe somehow get this to some needy children or needy kids or needy families or something like that in Niagara rather than buy them a package. If we were going to help them, maybe we can help them by purchasing some tickets and somehow finding a way to distribute them, maybe to some people in our city that are always going to be...
Want to make that motion, Councillor Carrio?
I might like to hear from somebody first.
Anybody else wishing to make comment? Yes, Councillor Wing?
My thoughts were to just refer this to budget preparations.
Maybe too late by that point, but I'm not sure. Okay, are you making a motion?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion by Councillor Wing, seconded by Councillor Peterangelo. Discussion on the motion?
No, that's...
No, yes, my motion, that's right. No, you're referring it to budget, right? Okay, okay, all those in favor?
For your worship, could we have the information on the tickets as well, so that we can have that discussion?
Okay, all right, okay, that's understood, right? They'll have that information from staff? Okay, all those in favor? Hold your hands up, please. Opposed? Okay, the motion's carried. Thank you very much. Next item is the memorandum indicating the need to fill the vacancy on the Committee of Adjustment. We do have a report from the clerk. Moved by Councillor Thompson, seconded by, is there a seconder? Councillor Peterangelo, seconder? Okay, any discussion of the matter? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. We have a request from Niagara Regional Planning and Public Works Committee, information on the support of the city of Niagara Falls, application for $10,000 through the Smarter Niagara Incentives Program for the city's Brownfield CIP, just to receive for the information for council. Okay, yes, Councillor Peterangelo, seconded by Councillor Maves. Thank you very much. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Now, the next item, this is actually a typo, Maple Lodge Kennels complaint against enforcement action. It was to be referred to staff. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, through the chair, referred to staff, and we'll come back with the background and a report.
Moved by Councillor Peterangelo, seconded by Councillor Maves. Any further discussion? Yes?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I read it initially here that for information to council, I think that this helps, for you, to Mr. McDonald, when is this report coming in from the expert we had giving us a report with respect to...
For your worship, I'll ask being...
Clerk, I think you'll deal with that, this is going to be his area?
We've met with the consultant, he's finalizing his report. We went through what he's submitted so far, there were some corrections that needed to be made, some clarifications that we wanted to staff. He's going to be delivering that to us probably by September 15th. We hope to probably have a meeting with you on it, the meeting in October, so. He has fulfilled his timelines, there was some difficulty on staff's part in the summer as far as getting together with regard to giving him some input that he requested, so it is proceeding as planned.
Maybe, maybe there's a possibility that we could have some kind of report back to the matter that I brought up probably four months ago regarding a kennel license on Sydney Street, which I've never heard anything about since that time.
Staff is aware of that, there was some discussion. I had prepared a memo with regard to that, where I made reference to that, we decided to just refer to staff at this time to gather some more information regarding this specific one, but when we come back, it will address this, and Mr. Bando's report also addresses the issue of council.
Hopefully, and I take this matter very seriously with, with all we're doing is contracting for animal control, but it creates so many problems and so many difficulties, and I take this to heart because of the involvement I had with the claws and paws and the matter that I brought up to you so many times. I just want, I'm going to circulate this around, I've mentioned to you before where there were charges laid against an individual who was involved with claws and paws, went on for two years, spent probably in the neighborhood of $10,000 on legal fees. Finally, at the end, there was a $5,000 donation made to the Humane Society, and all of a sudden, the charges were dropped and went away. And this is the first time, I want you to have a look at the check, and I'll bring that back to your attention when we get involved in a full discussion with the Humane Society.
Any other comments with regard to the motion? Yes, Councillor Wing?
Just a question. It's mentioned in here that Mr. Horabath of the Humane Society told the people that he was unable to license them this year because City Hall was changing the line law. Why would he say that?
Mr. Clerk?
He didn't say that.
Okay, these people are lying?
I mean, I'm not going to get into who said what, but the fact is, Mr. Horabath responded to us and said he did not say that, and he gave some clarification to staff that we'll bring when we report back on this.
He said he didn't say that.
He said he didn't say that, so it's, you know...
So you have no proof?
I have no proof that he said one thing or another.
Okay, so you shouldn't be saying that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, members of council, let's deal with it. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Now, the next item, we have two additional communication items, one at the Royal Canadian Legion branches, 51, 396, and 479, request for the week of September 16th to the 22nd to be proclaimed as Legion Week. Have a motion? Moved by Councillor Fisher, seconded by Councillor Maves. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. And second, at the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 51, request for a flag raising on September 17th at 10:00 a.m. Moved by Councillor Carrio, seconded by Councillor Maves. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Ratification of Community Services Committee actions, we're going to call on the Chair, Councillor Inoney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I'd rather like the, set a ratification...
Before you begin, then, how would a motion to go beyond the clock? Moved by Councillor Carrio, seconded by Councillor Peterangelo. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting in the Community Services Committee. A, the meeting's July 23rd, 2007, be amended to reflect the following. Councillor Wing noted a conflict on item two only in respect to the Parks Commission, the motion on report R 2007-16 be amended to read that the Centennial Water Molecule currently located at the High Tech Material Handling Company site Niagara on the Lake Virgin be returned to the city of Niagara Falls once construction of the four-pad community arena is completed, and that the Centennial Water Molecule be installed on a permanent basis at the new four-pad arena, that the management of High Tech Material Handling be invited to the opening and thanked for their years of guardianship. Two, under reports, MW 2007-95, Corwin Avenue Traffic Operations Review, that Corwin Avenue not be closed south of Luntley Lane, Park Store Store, that staff report back on options for traffic calming. MW 2007-101, Pitton Road at Lynnhurst Drive Intersection Control Review, that the yield sign facing eastbound motorists on Lynnhurst Drive at Pitton Road be replaced with an all-way stop control. MW 2007-102, Badger Road and Echo Circle Kendall Court Intersection Control Review, that a stop sign be installed facing northbound motorists on Echo Circle at the intersection of Badger Road and Echo Circle Kendall Court, and that a stop sign be installed facing southbound motorists on Kendall Court at the intersection of Badger Road and Echo Circle and Kendall Court. MW 2007-103, Intersection Improvements at Victoria Avenue and Clifton Hill, that council authorize staff to proceed with the public tender and construction on the intersection improvements at the intersection of Clifton Hill, and that the project be funded from debentures. MW 2007-105, Canadian Association of Fire Chiefs Conference Transit Charter Service be, a request that grant be approved for target ease to network bus service events. 2007-109, Post Extension of Young Road West of Morris Road, request for development agreement, that staff be directed to prepare a development agreement between the city and Air Queens Construction Limited that will set out the terms for the construction of Young Road West of Morris Road to the current municipal standard at the proponents' expense. MW 2007-96, Tender 152/105 Whiteman Bridge Rehabilitation, that this report be received for information regarding issues, progress, and investigations to date on the above noted project, that council approve the scheduling of a public information center for this fall to introduce a project to the interested affected public and stakeholders, and solicit input on construction staging alternatives, that council approve the potential delaying of construction of the proposed bridge rehabilitation from 2008 to 2009 based on the reasons contained within the report, that council authorize the investigation and assessment of alternatives for the replacement and relocation of existing water main crossings on the current bridge structure based on the rationale as outlined in this report, that the investigations to follow the municipal class environmental assessment process for Schedule B project, and that the municipal class EA be undertaken in-house by city staff. R 2007-14, Naming and Renaming Parks Policy, that the remissions to the naming and renaming parks policy 1,000.32 be approved, and that new business that signed should be reinstated on the Chickewa Alliance Club, recognizing the donation of roofing work completed by Hamlet Roofing, and that the Director of Transportation Services contact Mr. Mark to discuss alternatives for wood by traffic calming. I am done, and I now shall move.
Moved by Councillor Inoney, seconded by Councillor Maves. Any discussion to that? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. And councillor, we should just make, make the public aware that you did make an inquiry of our fire chief, that tomorrow there will be a memorial service for 9/11.
Not in minutes.
Pardon?
It was not...
Yes, yes, okay. 9/11 that will be held at Fire Hall Number 1 at the Morrison Street Station, at, the time will be 9:58 a.m., and there'll be a small service there commemorating the memorial of 9/11. Thank you. A call on ratification in camera actions, Mr. Clerk?
Purchase-related items from in camera, the recommendations for council's approval are that council approve the agreement of purchase and sale between the city and Badger Farms for $22,200 as outlined in report L 2007-42. Similarly, the council approve the agreement of purchase and sale between the city and Liliana Propuccio for $30,000 as outlined in L 2007-42, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the aforementioned agreements.
Motion to approve the same? Councillor Maves and Councillor Carrio? Okay, any questions with regard to that? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Members of council, we'll deal with the consent agenda, is there anything that may be requested removed? First of all, anything to remove from the consent agenda?
For your worship, I have questions on some...
Okay, could you just give us those, please?
Can we deal with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6? First seven?
First seven?
Yes, stopping at 2007-66, stopping at the downtown one.
Okay, you want to make that motion, please?
Yes.
Motion by Councillor Carrio to deal with the first seven on the consent agenda. Seconder? Councillor Fisher? Any discussion on that? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. The item, MPD 2007-66, the summary of financial incentive applications under the city's community improvement plans and proposed amendment to the downtown CIP. Yes, Councillor Carrio?
We have, we have explained what exactly they're asking for.
Certainly, yeah. Would I take that side? Yes, Mr. Harrison?
Thank you. The, the set of programs for downtown is a little, are a little bit different, one in specific is a little bit different as far as Drummondville. The, there's a loan program for facade, virtual building facades, and in Drummondville, it's a grant. We found in the downtown that there was not a lot of action on simply providing a loan for commercial revitalization. As a matter of fact, Drummondville area, we're actually receiving quite a few applications as based on managing grants. Somebody puts up, like the one on tonight's agenda, $7,000 is online, you can see grants together, $7,000, and this seems to be far more popular there. All of the report basically says, make the downtown project the same as the normal project, make it into a grant as opposed to a loan, and they will be the same.
And perhaps, Mr. Harrison, you might want to discuss the financial implications. A maximum of 250, is that correct, for the first year?
Well, we have a budget.
So we're working to the budget, so it's not changing? Okay. Okay, so councillor, I think that answers your question. Move, move that item by Councillor Carrio, seconded by Councillor DiDatti. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Next items, do you want to take those individually, or do you have a satisfactory explanation? 2007-68, 2007-69, any questions about that? Yes, Councillor Carrio?
For your worship, my question is, the taxes to be paid before the grant money is disbursed? I didn't see that where. I saw in the documentation where there is an appeal process, or to us, if the taxes aren't paid, but if they're also, they have to be paid before the, before there's a grant, so anyone that comes to us?
Mr. Harrison or Mr. Burton? Let's see who'd like to answer that question. Andrew Reveney? Mr. Harrison?
The requirement for any property that is received with grant is not activated before the disbursement.
I couldn't see it, I couldn't see it in there, so that's my question.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Carrio, you want to move that, or those two? Those two? Okay, a seconder to that, Councillor Inoney. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried. Thank you. Next items are 2007-76, 22, and 23. It's council's pleasure. Move those three by Councillor Peterangelo, seconded by Councillor Inoney. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. The next item on the agenda, members of council, are drainage matters. We have an engineer's report with regard to the Union Mars Drain Final Report. Anybody wish to discuss this? Mr. Holman? Self-explanatory? Okay?
Excess of report.
Motion to receive the report. Councillor Fisher, you're a seconder to that? Councillor Peterangelo? Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
For a move up, sir.
Pardon?
The first bylaw on your agenda is related to the Drainage Act. I did provide a memo to you on this one, and originally it was supposed to come. Unlike the other bylaws on tonight's agenda, this one will only technically be read twice because it can't be passed until the court of revision process happens, so I'd ask that you make a motion to read the first bylaw twice, and then we'll deal with the rest in the traditional fashion.
Okay. Motion to give bylaw 2007-174 first and second reading. Moved by Councillor Fisher, seconded by Councillor Peterangelo. You've heard the comments, the motion, any comments, I should say? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
So bylaw 2007-174 was read two times, and now we'll deal with the rest.
Thank you. And for the remainder of the bylaws, Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws for council's consideration?
No, there isn't, your worship.
Okay, can I have a motion entertain the, under just the bylaws, give you the right to give them a first reading, moved by Councillor Peterangelo, seconded by Councillor Maves. We have a second person, we're a seconder. Any, any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws 2007-175 to 2007-185 read a first and second time.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by Councillor Peterangelo, seconded by Councillor Maves. I think once again, council has heard the motion, any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws 2007-175 to 2007-185 read a second and third time and passed.
Thank you very much. Members of council, new business? Yes, Councillor Thompson?
Councillor Inoney and myself, over the last several months, have attempted to have our voice heard in the city of Niagara Falls with respect to the police building debate. We brought it up on several occasions, there was a motion here that a submission be made to the Police Commission, and we talked on numerous occasions about the importance of a police facility in the city of Niagara Falls, and particularly in the downtown area, if we're going to have any kind of revitalization. I honestly believe that without a police building in the downtown area, the revitalization, whatever effort it takes, is going to have a very difficult time because the police presence is certainly essential in my mind, particularly now and in the foreseeable future, to make sure that what everybody expects, that law and order and public safety are the highest priority. I think that I have to admire the city of St. Catharines and Port Colville and other I think that I have to admire the city of St. Catharines and Port Colbrun and other areas who are aggressively pursuing this matter as a council and as a municipality because they also realize the importance of a police facility within their municipalities. I was, and I'm getting up talking because I want to make it crystal clear where I'm coming from and what my motives and methods are with respect to having a police facility in the city of Niagara Falls and particularly in the downtown area. When I read the paper the next day, I saw that there were comments made, that you made with respect to there could be more police officers rather than a police building in the city of Niagara Falls. And I want to make it abundantly clear that my objective, and I hope this council's objective, is to have a police facility in the city of Niagara Falls and to fight for that like all of the other municipalities who realize the importance of having a police facility in their community, particularly in Niagara Falls with our unique situation, and I want to go along with all of the border community and the tourism, the 12 million people a year, and all of the unique things that this municipality has in comparison with everybody else in the region and the second largest population in the city of Niagara Falls, or in the region. So I want to go on record as saying my comments and I support a facility in this city. Trying to pretend that there's more police officers going to be in this municipality, in my opinion, is a joke. Somebody is trying to sell the idea of a building not being in the city of Niagara Falls because if the people in this region knew how many people and how many cars they had in their municipalities, particularly the small ones, it'd be horrifying. We do not have enough policing and to suggest that we're going to get unique treatment as a result of not having a police facility in our city, I don't think so. And I was delighted to see the next day the former deputy chief, retired James Moody, wrote and also made many of the same statements that I've made previously and reiterated here again tonight, that we are looking to fight for like the other major municipalities, and I enjoyed the debate on the regional council the other night, where people were very forceful saying that they wanted to have a police facility in their community. So I want to make it very clear what my motives are and my objectives are to make sure that we have a police building in the city of Niagara Falls, and I'm sure that there's going to be some other dialogue and discussion, and I have one other item after that.
Councillor Einoni?
Thank you, Mr. Reverend. You know, at Evo I had an opportunity to sit with the councillors from the city of St. Catherine's who think we're far too quiet. If I'm not mistaken, they had a Saturday meeting where the chief came in and spoke to them. We directed the mayor to go there and give our point of view. I too, I'm not even going to get into, you know, learning for five years I was chair of the chair, can you please do it, the chair before me, he learned statistics and compliments on the streets and quite often how few compliments were on the streets at any given time. I too don't believe that we're going to get more, that we increase police on the street through that. But I'll also say this, when I left his chair, and I know now they still struggle with it, we're one of the most successful community leasing committees because we've really driven it. The mayor drove it before I did, and I drove it now, and I drove it for five years after him, then we had another group driving it, we now have Todd Wright, who's now the new chair of community-based leasing. The police service is mandated by the province to provide community-based leasing. I mean, we talked amongst each other more times than I can count, but that's bluff. All their mandate to provide it, sometimes, you know, it's there, but it really doesn't do anything. We were one of the few committees that actually did something. We created the Niagara Falls Safe City Campaign, I'm thinking that we haven't remade that, so that taking the headquarters out of downtown flies in the face of everything that we put forward, but other communities can't get their community-based leasing committees off the ground. You can't get neighborhood watch going because you can't get the percentage of the community to buy into it so that it's a proactive program. We heard that every year, seminar after seminar after seminar, taking these headquarters out of the communities flies in the face of every yearly community-based leasing seminar held at Brock or in Thorold or in Beamsville or anywhere for the five years I was chair, that they had it, they still continue to have them, and I'm assuming the information is the same. I'm not one who ever says I think the police service board budget needs to be cut, I don't think we can do more with less. I know the regional councillors are pushing it, but I'll say this, when you watch that debate on regional council, the city of St. Catherine's council is there behind their mayor, they know that issues are the agenda that night, they know it's going to be debated, and they were all there en masse, they couldn't understand why we weren't. So maybe I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, next time it comes, although I can't go to 8:30 in the morning if she's holding a public meeting, I could put on a school bus, but I'll come on a regional council meeting night and stand there to show support and sit there and show support that we want to keep it here. So if it's coming again, let us know, we'll go. I don't know how many others will go, but I mean, it was a unanimous vote to fight to keep it open. It really doesn't matter what one person's opinion is, the reader acted that we don't want our headquarters closed, that's what we fight for because that's what this council sent us a call. So I'd love to go to the region and tell them, I thought we're going to have Chief Selfall here at some point, we'll tell her, we're not shy, and let's get on the same bandwagon that St. Catherine's is because they're vehement and they're shocked we're quiet because we're rarely quiet about things like this.
Thank you, councillor Einoni, appreciate your comments. First of all, the entire council, the cities of St. Catherine's, attended the region last week, you're certainly welcome to do so. But I should point out to you, there's a substantial difference to the city of St. Catherine's, the development of their downtown corps, we're talking there about 300 or more jobs right now between sworn and civilian people who work out of Number 11 Division, the main office. So between the sworn constables and those who are civilians, there's over 300 jobs in downtown corps. I've had this discussion with councillor McMullin with respect to his motion. There was a lot of misinformation that came forward, and let me tell you that the chief has made this very clear to the council last Thursday. Their obligation is to provide adequate effective policing, and the chief's mandate is to do so, and she will do just that. It's dictated by the Police Services Act, and I should also inform council that no decision has been made. I have a commitment from the chief that she will be here, there will be a lot of public consultation. This process will probably take at least eight or nine more months before we get anything further. The council of the day, I'm sorry, the regional council requested that the regional, that the chief be authorized to undertake a program review and to review the entire operation. We had several documents provided to us last week, about six documents in fact that were provided, and what was leaked supposedly to the press was one document out of the six. The chief is well aware of her obligations, and she has clarified that very well with the council, and the police service board knows what it has to do. So, you know, you may compare the two cities, but we don't have 300 or 400 jobs sitting adjacent to city hall here in downtown. We have had problems downtown or downtown corps with regard to our building, our existing building, and yet we've had issues of prostitution, which has gone through the whole city. The building hasn't moved, certainly, so we've had, you know, if it is a deterrent, it takes place within hundreds of feet, as you know councillor Einoni, of our 22 division offices. So having said that, I'm not sure if that's quite an effective way to describe whether it's a deterrent to crime. My question that was posed to me that evening was, if you don't get the station, and I took the message to the police services board that day, the message was prepared and I gave each one of you a copy, I believe, of the presentation, but the message was, please, please, please keep us informed of the progress and please have dialogue with us. So we're at that stage now where they have submitted the six documents, I think you've received some of those in the clerk's office, and I should tell you, we have the opportunity, I've asked the fact that the chief will come to Niagara Falls, and she'll visit every municipality, we'll have dialogue. And what do we expect of the chief? And that gets down to the basic principle. The chief knows what her obligations are for adequate and effective policing, regardless of what we say as a council. Some people may say we're understaffed, some people may say we have enough staff. I personally would like to see more police on the street, and that's where the rubber hits the road, and that's where people feel secure. I've had time on police services board, and that was the biggest concern I had people express to me, I want to see officers on the street, when I call for service, I want a police officer. Now, is the chief mandated to build 12 police stations in 12 municipalities? I don't think so, and that's the review that she's undertaking right now. Do we want to create 12 Taj Mahals in 12 municipalities and suffer on the beat or on the street? I don't think so, and I think it's up to the chief to come and advise us and to have public consultation. She did say she would meet with us, and I have that commitment, and I feel very confident about that. So nothing has been decided, that was the message she asked us to take forward, we had some voice of reason that reached the council last week, you're certainly welcome to come. The St. Catherine's issue is much different because they're talking about a substantial impact on their downtown corps, and I've had this discussion with the mayor. And the point is, we don't have the 300 or 400 jobs that they have in their downtown corps in that police station, nor will we ever. So we're lucky if we have 20 people working out of that station, and that isn't even for me to decide. So I think let's just have an opportunity to have the police chief come here, dialogue with us. If you wish to come to council when there's a presentation again, certainly be my guest and join us. Yes?
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I don't care why Mayor McMullin is fighting to keep his police station down there. I don't have mandates from people of St. Catherine's, our mandate's from the people of Niagara Falls. I'm hard pressed to be able to explain to somebody out on Trurosy why we don't have a police station regardless of downtown, a police station, but the casino patrol unit because it's paid for by the casino has a whole unit for the tourist corridor, but the residents don't have anywhere to go in Niagara Falls. You can make any argument you want, I couldn't care less. Our argument is, we want our police station, we want it on Morrison, we want it to tie in with the development downtown, I don't care why their council's fighting for it. My mandate's for here, yours I would assume is for here also, this is where we ran, this is what we're fighting for, it was unanimous voted council. I'm sure that's the message Chief Selfall's going to get when she was here, but I don't care how many jobs are losing out of the course in Catherine's, that's not my problem.
When you make the comparison, I should point this out to you. First of all, who goes to a police station today? And secondly, I bet you 1,000 people in Niagara Falls who are tourists have no clue that there is an active unit underneath. Excuse me, please.
You're missing the point.
Excuse me. Please be seated, I listened to you, please be seated. I listened to you earlier. Secondly, I'd like to make the point, we may end up with even a larger police station in our city. So that hasn't been determined, I should point that out to you, and that was pointed out by the chief of police. You can ask her that very question. So we could have a larger facility than we have right now, and we don't know that yet. Okay? Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, no, I understand why we're in the problem. That dialogue right there tells me why we're waffling and we're going to be in serious trouble with respect to our situation with the police station. I want to make a motion right now that reaffirm that this council is strongly in favor of locating a police building downtown in the city of Niagara Falls.
Second.
Second the motion, all those in favor? Motions carried, thank you very much. Further discussion?
I have another item that I'd like to talk about, and this one irks me just as much as the other ones. For years, we suffered through probably one of the worst blighted areas on the Robert Street part of the 420, where the Department of Highways had a plan to buy up the houses and to create an appropriate entrance to the falls and to the city. We worked for many years to try to make that happen, and certainly the province didn't seem to have the desire to carry it through. There was a lot of people that worked extremely hard to acquire those properties, the region, the city, and the Parks Commission to buy those properties, tear them down, there's a few that are still there, but to landscape and create a wonderful entrance into the city of Niagara Falls, and it was done with local taxpayers' money to make sure that we created that beautiful area right from Stanley Avenue right down into the park. I was driving in my car when I got a message a week or so ago there that we were fortunate enough to get $50,000 for the improvements of 420 from Stanley Avenue out to that the province is responsible for. You know, I cannot believe with all of the comments we've been making here and other people across the province and other mayors from Toronto along down about the downloading that has gone on for years and years to the local municipalities, and now they're going to give us $50,000 to go along with our hundred and some odd to improve the roadway out there. You know, I think we got to go to our friends who are running for office today and say, the municipality is not going to pay for the maintenance and the upkeep of provincial highways, and that's exactly what they're expecting us to do. We did the other part of Robert Street, it's the province's responsibility to look after the roadway out to 420 beyond Stanley Avenue, and I think $50,000 offering that is an insult, and in fact, I think you should just tell them, we don't want the 50,000, we'll put up a nice billboard saying, the province is responsible for the condition of the highway, which is unkept and eyesore as far as we're concerned. I think that's really disgusting, and I'd like to have a letter sent to the province saying that we're not going to do anything with that roadway, that we're going to identify who is responsible for it and make sure that the city taxpayers don't have to pay for a provincial highway. I think that's disgusting.
Yes, councillor Di Addati?
I have one more business, your worship, just a thought, maybe this council might look to invite Frank Dantson here for some tennis players.
Yes.
Some recognition and well wishes. Internationally, he's ranked 69th, he's a top Canadian in the world right now, he's brought a lot of notoriety to Niagara Falls, a lot of media mention, I know I was traveling Quebec a few weeks ago, and he was in the headlines in all the major papers. He may want to invite him here and give some new recognition.
That's an excellent idea, I'd like to do that, have a second to that motion. Councillor Einoni, any discussion, all those in favor? Motions carried, thank you. Any further? Motion adjourned. Moved by councillor Maves, seconded by councillor Di Addati, thank you very much.